Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Lincoln's regular meeting of the City Council. Tonight's meeting will be televised and available on cable channel eighteen and via Zoom. This evening's invocation will be given by Rabbi Yankee Hecht from the Lincoln Jewish Center. Once the invocation has concluded, Mayor Andriata will call the meeting to order.
Come on it, Rabbi. Thank you for being here.
... of our great city of Lincoln. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our city. Let us recognize that this is not only a great honor and civic responsibility, but also a sacred endeavor. It is a God-given role that reflects one of the seven universal laws bestowed upon all of humanity: to establish justice and ensure a peaceful and moral society, a society governed by laws grounded in the recognition of you, God, as the sovereign ruler of all people and all nations. Grant these public servants wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. Guide them so that they will always be mindful of your presence, striving to enact laws with honesty, integrity, and compassion. May they have the wisdom to transform challenges into opportunities and to plant the seeds today that will bring about the growth and blessings of tomorrow. In times of discord and division, we are reminded that the way to combat darkness is not with force, but with light. Even one small candle has the power to dispel much darkness. May the City of Lincoln serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life, and may we very soon merit the fulfillment of the prophecy of Isaiah: "They shall beat their swords into flaushears and their spears into pruning hooks." Nation shall not lift the sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore. I will conclude with a prayer in Hebrew and then in English. Oseh shalom bim romav hu yaseh shalom alino va'al kol yisrael be'iru amein. May he who brings peace in the heavens bring peace upon us, and let us say, "Amein."
Thank you, Rabbi. I really appreciate you being here. All right, call the meeting to order at six oh three. Hope can we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Councilmember Reedy, Councilmember Pearl,
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown,
Here.
Councilmember Eklund,
Here.
Mayor Andriata.
Here, thank you. Mr. Dan Katania is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Senate, the United States of America. And to the Republic of Richardson, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and justice.
Sir, I want to welcome everybody to council tonight. It's great to see all of you. Item number four, agenda modifications. Thank you. Council wish to change anything on the... Okay, all right. I don't, I don't have a modification. I'm just going to throw something in here really quickly that I wanted to share with everybody because I found it to be noteworthy and, and something that I wanted to mention and to thank Officer Matsui. And so he's here tonight. Where, where did he go? Oh, there you are. Thank you. Okay, he's over here to the left. So on Sunday, I had the privilege of joining Summit Church in their service because they did a Public Safety Sunday, and they recognized our police and fire department and the Placer County Sheriff's Office. And while Chief Al was talking, he shared a story that happened just recently at the beginning of this month, and it literally brought me to tears, and I wanted to just make note of it. So I'm going to read you what the report was, and I want us to give Officer Matsui our thanks. On September third, twenty twenty-five, at about eighteen thirty-four hours, Officer Matsui was at the AMPM and Twelve Bridges Drive buying an energy drink from the convenience store. Officer Matsui noticed a juvenile crying out front and elected to talk to him. So there was a young man crying. The officer could have just went on his way, but he stopped to find out what was, what was the problem. Officer Matsui learned that the juvenile's electric bicycle was just stolen. Officer Matsui obtained information and started a grand theft investigation. During the investigation, Officer Matsui learned the license plate number and found the vehicle on the flock safety cameras. Pictures of the vehicle showed the stolen bicycle in the back of a truck, which was registered, registered to a local construction company. Officer Matsui contacted the superintendent of the company and obtained the information of all three subjects who were inside the truck on the date of the theft. On nine five, at about fourteen hundred hours, Officer Matsui coordinated with the superintendent and responded to the business with Detective Verga and Officer Moreno. Officer Matsui obtained confessions from all three suspects, who all admitted to intending to steal the bicycle and all playing a part in the theft. Officer Matsui further learned that the e-bike was left in Stockton at the residence of one of the suspects. Officer Matsui contacted a family member of the suspect. The family member agreed to transport the bicycle to Lincoln Police Department. All three suspects were arrested for grand theft and booked into the Placer County Jail. Additionally, the bicycle was returned to the Lincoln Police Department. These suspects would not have been held accountable, nor would there be justice had Officer Matsui not talked to this juvenile. Good job to Officer Matsui and thanks to the officers who helped him. This, my friends, is a prime example of the fine men and women that we have serving in Lincoln Police Department. So I wish that I could give you something other than just our thanks, but would you please stand up and let's, just let me say thank you very much for a job well done. Yeah.
Part of what helps us be the safest city in Northern California.
Yes, yes, that's why we're the fourth safest city in, in, in the state. Yes, in the state. And the young man got his bike back and, and, and all the way to Stockton, all the way to Stockton, and he got his bike back. So thank, what was that? Yes, yeah. Thank you very much. And so thank you for coming in on your day off. You can skedaddle if you want to, but I really appreciate you being here so we could thank you. All right, welcome. Yeah. Okay, we have two other presentations to do. Item five eight is a proclamation, recognizing the week of September twenty-first through September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five as Frontotemporal Degeneration Awareness Week. Okay. Do you guys have that on your agenda? Is it, do you have it pulled up? I don't know if you had the text of it. Okay. Proclamation, the City Council of, oh, actually, would you, would you come to the, would you come to the front and stand at the microphone? So, yeah. Yes. Ter, yes, I'm going to have her, I'm going to, so, so I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to have you share a few words, and then we're going to get a picture. Okay? Thank you. The City Council of the City of Lincoln recognizes the week of September twenty-first, September through September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, as Frontotemporal Degeneration Awareness Week. Whereas the Association of Frontotemporal Degeneration, AFTD, reports that FTD is a terminal and incurable neurodegenerative disease affecting the front and temporal lobes, causing impairments to speech, personality behavior, and motor skills that constitutes a major public health concern. And whereas FTD strikes people as young as seventeen years of age and as old as eighty-seven years of age, with the largest percentage of those affected being in their forties to sixties, rendering people in the prime of life unable to work or function normally. And whereas approximately forty percent of people with FTD have a family history of FTD or a related condition such as ALS, with about one-half of those found to have an inherited form accounted by mutations in the progranulin C9ORF72, TAU, MAPT, and other rare genes. And whereas, while the AFTD is the leading national organization exclusively focused on the spectrum of FTD disorders with the mission to improve the quality of life of people affected by FTD and drive research to a cure. And whereas, it is imperative that there be a greater awareness of this serious disease, and more must be done to increase activity at the local, state, and national levels. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-first to the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, as Frontotemporal Degeneration Awareness Week in the City of Lincoln. And hopefully, in just one second, we will pass and adopt this ninth day of September twenty twenty-five by unanimous vote. May I have a motion to adopt this resolution, please?
I'm moved.
Back in.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Right. So thank you for being here, and we're very pleased to do this proclamation for you. Would you like to share a little bit about your work?
Well, thank you for declaring the proclamation for FTD. It's easier than frontal temporal degeneration. I am very passionate with this. The Walter family has had six family members pass from FTD and ALS, and I'm proud to say it was because of the research that the Walter brothers participated in, they found the C9ORF72 gene. And now we are so much closer to a cure. We're hoping maybe by the end of the year, I was just reading about a clinical trial. It's been very positive, phase three, and it will be the first drug ever to help with the FTD, slow down the progression and help. And we are the association, the only national association that helps families and patients of FTD. So it's been, I don't know, it's been in the news a lot lately because Bruce Willis does have the FTD, and he has the speech variant. The Walter family has the movement variant, and theirs happens to be ALS.
Okay.
So.
Well, thank you for the work that you're doing, and we're proud to give this proclamation, and hopefully, hopefully, there'll be more attention drawn to it. Sometimes it takes someone like Bruce Willis that, that suffers from it, that people go, "Oh, what is that again?"
And his wife, Emma, has been a wonderful spokesperson for it. And can I just say,
Yes.
the nineteenth, is that okay?
Yeah, go right in.
Of September, so it's next Friday at the Women's Lincoln's Club. I am, I do a fundraiser. It's my eighth annual wine tasting event. So it's from five thirty to seven thirty, so.
Okay.
The fundraiser and awareness program. So I'd love to see some of the faces there. It would be great, so. And thank you very much
Welcome.
for doing this.
Can we take a photo with you?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, just kind of, we're just going to... Hopefully we'll have a better photo. And our second proclamation is recognizing Find the Good Day observed on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there somebody here? Oh, can you, could you come to the, yeah, please come to the microphone? And why don't I let you introduce yourself first, and then you can share, and then I'll read. Yeah.
So we're going to change it up just a little bit.
Yes, just a little bit, yes.
I can pivot. Thank you for having me. I'm Mary Gaston. I am the elected vice president-elect to the Junior League of Sacramento. We are a nonprofit volunteer organization where we focus on the advancement of women's leadership through volunteerism throughout the community. Our community partners include Youth Win Services, Yolo Food Bank, and various other community partners. We've been around for over eighty years. We just celebrated our eightieth anniversary, and currently we are looking for new membership. We solicit women of all ages. We welcome you to the league with one goal in mind, that you are there to volunteer and that we are able to empower you. So thank you so much for having us.
All right, thank you. All right, just hang tight there for a second.
Sure.
And we'll, we'll pass this, this proclamation. The City Council of the City of Lincoln recognizes September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as Find the Good Day in the City of Lincoln, and encourages all citizens to participate in acts of kindness, volunteerism, and community service. Whereas the Junior League of Sacramento is dedicated to promoting volunteerism, empowering women, and enhancing communities through effective leadership and action. And whereas, Find the Good Day observed on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, encourages individuals to recognize and celebrate the positive aspects of their communities and to take action to uplift others. And whereas, on this day, we acknowledge the importance of kindness, compassion, and community service in fostering positive change and building stronger, more resilient communities. And whereas, the Junior League of Sacramento continues to play a pivotal role in advocating for significant community initiatives and empowering individuals to make a lasting impact. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the City Council, do hereby proclaim September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Find the Good Day in the City of Lincoln, and encourage all citizens to participate in acts of kindness, volunteerism, and community service. Passed and adopted in one second, this ninth day of September twenty twenty-five by unanimous vote. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we get a photo with you?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, love that kind of stuff. Wonderful, wonderful. Okay. We are going to move on to item number nine. Public comment on non-agenda items. This is a time where anybody in the chambers or online can speak to an item that is not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. All speakers, time will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the mayor. All comments or questions should be addressed to the mayor, and in most cases, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, but may engage in brief discussions, provide direction to city staff, or schedule items for future meetings. And I'm going to start with Mrs. Fran Nevis, because she wants to share about Admission Day.
Thank you. My name is Fran Nevis. I've been a resident of Lincoln for twenty-two years. I'm a Native daughter of the Golden West. We have a parlor here since nineteen oh three. We are in Plaza right now because the downtown Lincoln Association's having a food truck frenzy with all the high schools and their sports programs. And it just happens to be California Admission Day. It used to be a holiday, and it hasn't been celebrated lately. So one of the goals of the Native Daughters is to preserve California history. So I brought this flag behind me. I'm going to tell you about it before I step back, or you won't be able to hear it. But it, California joined the, the United States in eighteen fifty, and we were the thirty-first state. So there actually was a flag flying from eighteen fifty-one to eighteen fifty-eight with thirty-one stars, and this is one, this is what it looked like. It was a field of thirty with one at the top.
Thank you.
There were some other stars, other flags that had thirty-one stars, like two circles of stars with stars in the four corners. And there's one of those in the Calusa Museum. Okay, so, but what I really want to tell you about today is the California flag. Oh, and when we had this thirty-one star flag flying over the United States, there were three presidents, and they were Millard, Fillmore, Franklin Pierce, and James Buchanan. So, and Mr. Vice Mayor Brown offered to help me by holding out your California state flag so that you can see it. So I want to tell you what the symbols are. So this flag wasn't official until nineteen fifty-nine. And before that, there were a lot of other flags. One was just white with a red star. The red star symbolizes our independence from Mexico. It was after the Bear Flag Revolt. The red stripe on the bottom represents the blood and the soldiers, all the people who suffered for our country during all the wars. There was actually people from the American Revolution buried up in Camp Far West Cemetery. The California Republic, we were a sovereign nation for twenty-five days. There was something called the Bear Flag Revolt, and you might have heard of it. And when, when the Californians overtook the country, they caught, they were a republic, but it was only twenty-five days. And then they joined the United States. The grizzly bear is extinct in California, but it's on the endangered species list. And when, when, when the pioneers and the settlers were coming over the mountains, they were wearing, it was cold, you know, and they were wearing fur coats and things, and the Mexicans thought they looked like bears. So they called them osos, you know, they, so anyway, the bear. That was the last grizzly bear in California, and he lived in San Francisco till he died. And then they stuck to him, and they put him in the Academy of Sciences. So you can see that grizzly bear in the Academy of Sciences, and they actually gave him the name of monarch. So now you know what all the symbols on the flag mean. And we're, so there's seven of us or so down in the park. Mayor Holly was there, giving out the flags, talking to the kids. You know, we have a table and a display, and talking about the Native Daughters as well. So I guess that might be it.
Thank you, Fran.
And I didn't look at the clock, but...
Thank you.
So it's the hundred and seventy-fifth birthday. So it's happy birthday, California. And there's a big thing down at the Capitol tonight in Sacramento, actually. They actually are calling it a food truck frenzy down at the Capitol. And so I'd like to give you some California flags, maybe for your office or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. It's good to see you in person and not on Zoom. You know what? You can just give them to Hope, and she'll pass them down. That way you don't have to trek all the way through here. Thank you, Fran. Appreciate it. No, you're going to go back to the food truck frenzy? Yes, we already know, yes. Buy me a taco, would you? Okay. Next is Hallie Winstead? Is that correct? Hallie? Must have left, okay. Rick Rogers? No, Rick Rogers? Okay. Mr. Stan Nader?
Madam Mayor and Council, my name is Stan Nader, and I live in Twelve Bridges. Although I did not stay for the completion of the last City Council meeting, I did view the meeting on video and listen to the City Manager's comments during his report section of the meeting. He indicated the city's update to the twenty seventeen Water Master Plan would be presented to the council soon. He indicated there would be a robust and mind-numbing discussion regarding the outcomes of the update. That would tell me that the city had not positioned itself to accommodate the massive level of new development without impacting existing residents. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the City Council adopted an ordinance relating to water connection charges. In Section five and Section thirteen point oh four, three six zero D, it states the purpose of the charges are to fund and design the construction of the city's water system and purchase source water capacity. One would have hoped that this matter, being before the City Council, would have demonstrated the city was not prepared to accommodate the level of new development without improving the city's ability to distribute water throughout the city and hold new development accountable for providing additional capacity to the city's water delivery system. In reading the twenty seventeen Water Master Plan, the words "water reliability" are mentioned often. This tells me the city has a great responsibility to timely address the city's ability to adequately deliver water to its residents and assuring new development as an active partner in making this happen. I was speaking with a resident who lives on the east side of the city in a KB development very near Hungry Hall Road. She told me she has limited water pressure. I know the city manager has received similar concerns from other residents around the city. I did receive an email from the city manager Thursday stating the City Council would be receiving a preliminary update to this very important matter. I will be looking forward to the City Council's discussion on the final master plan update when it's presented to you in October. And I did receive an email from Sean inviting me to meet with him to discuss this in more detail, and we will be meeting Tuesday. Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards I have. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Byron Chapman, Twelve Bridges area. The last council meeting, it was brought up the fact that I had met Mr., or had communications with Mr. Will Foot, the ADA coordinator, as well as the chief engineer. At that meeting, it was brought up that he was the ADA coordinator and the fact that I had met him before. The reality of that is, we did have communication. The very first communication was a letter, July sixth, two thousand twenty-one, that I had taken down to the City Hall in order to file a complaint for the ADA. Once I got that filed in, on July the sixth, on July the 6th, 21, second contact was October the 14th via an email, also 2021. The third contact was on October 18th, an email to me from Mr. Wolf, or Foot, excuse me. At that time, I had sent a letter back to him in the email asking what was going to take place with this. That was four months later. After that, the project over just half a block from here on F Street finally got taken care of. That was a nine-month stint. At the last council meeting, the city attorney mentioned that Mr. Foot is a certified access specialist. Now, unless he's listed it under another name, he's not on that list. I pulled that list up as of today, and I called him and talked to him, and they said they've never had that name. So maybe it's under a different name. I can only hope that it is. With that, when I moved in approximately a dozen or so years ago, I noticed that there was something going on with the city that I personally couldn't put up with. And that was the lack of work from the city in order to start working on the ADA barriers, which was, in the very first evaluation transition plan, 21 years late. So the government that dealt with that, the city body, for 21 years did zero. No budget, no nothing. 21 years. And 400 pages of barriers, and mostly three to four in each side of the page. So I could have done one thing. I could have said, well, ignore that. I'll just deal with it and move on. Well, I choose not to, because Lincoln's a wonderful place to live, and I wanted to be able to enjoy the people, the goods, the services, and most important, to participate. My disability isn't going anywhere, and neither am I. If there's anyone in the city that is prevented from enjoying their life because of a disability and barriers are in the way, please contact me. So what I've done is I have a copy here that I'll give to the city clerk. And it will show you the three items that I covered in 1921, 2021. And it still hasn't gotten any better, and there is no pass for Mr. Wolf. And I'm sure he's a very understanding, caring man. There's no direction on him.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Stella, did you have a public comment? Hi. It's a little button on the...
There you go. Ooh, it's green. I just want to tell you that I see our city staff working really hard. And I wanted to acknowledge them and let them know that I see the hard work that they're putting in. I see the staff reports that are being written, and they don't get written overnight. They take weeks long, a lot of preparation that's there. And I want you guys to know that they put a lot of work in to prepare that material for you guys. And I really enjoy the synergy that's developing between our city council now and seeing you guys to start advocating with what is an interest and a passion with each and one of you. And so I want you to know, Madam Mayor, that I am a very happy resident. But that doesn't mean that everything's okay. But I want you all to know that I do really appreciate the city keeping my streets safe. And I do appreciate the services I provide and the patience that the city has with me. And I want to make sure that as we continue to have this council grow together, that we have good accountability and a good relationship with our staff as they come to you for a report and for approval of things. So thank you for serving in this capacity, and I thank our city staff. There's a lot of them. I remember the HR lady mentioning how many people and how many we used to have and how much we've grown. And so I just want you guys to know that as a resident in the city, I want to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stella. Appreciate that. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment? Okay, last call for the room. Okay, we'll close public comment, and we will move along to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that council wishes to ask a question or to poll? No? Okay. If not, then I will take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'm moved.
Second. All right, roll call, please, Hope.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Thank you. Item eight, Public Hearings. 8A, Lincoln Place Tentative Subdivision Map. Time Extension Public Hearing to Consider the Request of a Time Extension to an Approved Tentative Subdivision Map called Lincoln Place for additional two years with the new map expiration on September 12, 2027. The owner applicant, Janay A. Hoffman Trust. And Efren is going to give us this report.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Efren Sanchez, Senior Planner with Community Development Department. The project we have before you is a two-year time extension request to the previously approved Lincoln Place Tentative Subdivision Map submitted by Hoffman Trust. In September of 2023, City Council approved the Lincoln Place Tentative Subdivision Map project to subdivide two residential parcels totaling 5.32 acres into 21 single-family lots. In April of 2025, the applicants timely filed their first discretionary time extension request to extend the map's expiration date. This will allow the applicant additional time to process improvement plans, implement conditions of approval, and record the final map. On August 20, 2025, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending the city council approve the time extension request. During this meeting, the PC asked the applicant why there's a delay with developing this property. The applicant responded by saying that his team is currently under the real estate negotiations with a potential buyer to purchase both this project and the neighboring project to the west. The project is located near the southwest corner of Nicholas Road and Joiner Parkway. The property has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential and is zoned R1 single-family residential. Image on the left is the aerial photo of the project site, highlighted in blue. Image on the right is the actual tentative subdivision map. The applicant has shown a sustained effort to meet the requirements of the map by anticipating the time needed to subsequently process the final map. The time extension will provide additional time for the applicant to satisfy the conditions of approval, get improvement plans reviewed and approved, and ultimately record the final map. This is the first discretionary time extension request to this tentative map. According to our Lincoln Municipal Code, a total of six years are allowed for discretionary time extensions. In the event the final map is still in process by the time the two-year time extension is set to expire, the applicant can request for a second discretionary time extension of four years. The approved map remains consistent with the applicable standards of the general plan, zoning ordinance, and subdivision ordinance. Development Engineering recommended minor text amendments to conditions of approval number 13 as part of the time extension application. The text amendments makes and takes into consideration the efforts the applicant team has made towards executing this particular condition. The applicant submitted the legal description and plat maps. However, the execution of the revocable offer of dedication for the public street easement connection to the west of Lincoln Place is still pending. The proposed text amendments are shown in strike-through deletions and underlined as added text. Staff coordinated with the applicant team, who have also agreed with the proposed modifications to this condition as seen on the screen. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and consider the information and findings in the staff report, as well as public comments, and adopt a resolution as recommended by the Planning Commission. One, determine that no additional environmental analysis is required to approve a two-year time extension for the Lincoln Place Tentative Subdivision Map subject to the revised conditions of approval as seen in Attachment 1. That concludes my presentation. Also, part of the applicant team, Michael Robertson's here in the audience. If you have any additional questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council before I open the public hearing? No? Okay. I'll open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to make testimony on this item? Okay. Would the applicant like to share a few words, or?
Michael Robertson, Baker Williams Engineering, just want to thank staff for helping us through the process for the time extension. If you have any questions.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Oh, okay. Close the public hearing. If there's no questions or concerns, then I'll take a motion to approve the item.
I'm moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Yep, that was easy. All right. Item 8B, Accessory Dwelling Units, ADU Ordinance. Amendment: Proposed Text Amendments to Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 18.37 and Related Section of Title 18, Zoning, and Recommended by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. HCD Efren, again, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Efren Sanchez, Senior Planner with Community Development Department. The item we have before you are proposed text amendments to the city's ADU ordinance as recommended by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or otherwise known as HCD. In 2024, City Council adopted Ordinance 10-8B, amending the provisions of Lincoln Municipal Code that regulate the use of accessory dwelling units in the city. On August 6, 2024, the adopted ADU ordinance was submitted for a 60-day review to HCD. Eight months later, on April 24, 2025, HCD provided findings stating that the adopted ADU ordinance was out of compliance with state law. The letter stated that although the city's ADU ordinance addressed many statutory requirements, additional amendments were needed. On August 20, the Planning Commission approved a resolution recommending city council adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 1837, as recommended by HCD. The discussion at the Planning Commission was minimal, and they all agreed that this was a routine administrative action to bring the city of Lincoln into conformance with state law. HCD's findings included new ADU laws that came into effect at the beginning of this year. They requested we replace outdated statutory reference numbers to change provisions that conflict or restrict rights granted under state law and for us to modify our standards for more objective standards. Overall, the proposed text amendments are minor in nature. Accepting these minor text amendments will help the city obtain compliance with state ADU law. CDD staff collaborated with the city manager's office and city attorney in reviewing and responding to HCD's 11 comments. A response to those comments was transmitted on June 13, 2025. Subsequently, on June 24, 2025, HCD staff reviewed the proposed amendments. Ultimately, HCD confirmed approval of the proposed amendments. Now that we have HCD's approval, the PC was tasked with reviewing the proposed amendments to make a recommendation to city council as part of the amendment process. This slide gives a sample of the proposed amendments. The rest of the proposed amendments can be found in Exhibit A of Attachment 1. As you can see, the proposed amendments are minor in nature, providing additional clarification as requested by HCD. As staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing, consider the information contained in the staff report and testimony of the public, and take the following action as recommended by the Planning Commission. One, determine that the proposed amendments qualify for a statutory exemption. And two, adopt the proposed amendments as part of the ADU ordinance amendment. That concludes my presentation, and if the city council has any questions, just let me know.
Can you actually go back to your slides there and go back one more? Oh, right here. Okay, no, the next one up, yeah, where it talks about subjective, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so this ordinance is use of subjective design standards instead of required objective standards. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes. So with that, in our actual ordinance, there's a section about architectural styles. And so our original ordinance said that like, hey, you know, you, like, as long as you match the ADU, the detached ADU to the primary house, you know, like, you know, that's essentially the requirement. Well, HCD doesn't feel like that's very objective, because it's very subjective in nature, saying like, well, someone could be like, say like, well, that doesn't really match to the, the ADU doesn't really match the primary residence. So therefore, they recommend that we change that language. And so instead of having that, we have very objective standards, like materials as far as like stucco, wood, paneling, vinyl, board, like that sort of thing. So by having, including those standards, those specific standards, then we take away the subjectivity of architecture.
So by doing that, you're basically securing the fact that the ADU will match the house, pretty much, the primary. Like, you have the standards, the materials that you just mentioned, and so for all intents and purposes, it will match for the most part. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, that's the idea. That's what we had. But yeah, the state required us to be very more particular in that.
The state actually required us to do the opposite, where it doesn't have to match. We can't require... That's what I was wanting to clarify. It felt like the state was saying it could look like whatever it wanted it to look like. That is correct, ma'am. Okay, but we're not doing that, correct? We are. We are complying with the state. Okay. That's why I want to clarify what we're talking about here.
So Mayor, I, at least personally, had a major problem with this comment from the state. I think I, we went round and round internally about what, you know, the term of, in my opinion, they are sort of using a subjective analysis of the term objectivity, if that makes any sense. Because I thought that in every single design criteria that I'm aware of in the state, you know, architectural treatments and materials are typically, you know, pretty clear and concise. I mean, you might have a teeny variation. My sense is, is that what they're trying to accomplish is other jurisdictions that don't really want to comply with this law creating barriers to slow projects, you know, and so we're kind of getting painted with a broader brush. What I did mention to some of you during prep was that it's pretty common in planning projects when you submit them that a person like Efren or some of his colleagues will review it, and they may have some suggestions for you about how your project could be better. And I don't know what your experience is, Efren, but mine is even when it's not something that's printed in the code that we have to require by ordinance, most of the time builders will say, okay, that sounds pretty good. I mean, and I think generally in Lincoln, our risk level's pretty low here. In general, I think that people are gonna, if they're gonna spend a lot of money to build an ADU, they probably want it to generally match or at least look nice in comparison to their home.
Right, well, that's what's confusing about this, because it's the people who own the house and the property are building the ADU. It's not somebody random coming and building an ADU on their property and saying, I want it to look like whatever I want it to look like. So I'm not, I'm, the state, so I'm not sure like why they're, this is a big deal, right? Because people generally, and if they want it to be a little different, then that's their prerogative. I'm not sure why we're complicating this.
The point of this legislation, which they're sort of trying to, you know, really tighten up, was to basically eliminate almost all barriers to building ADUs. So remember, no parking requirements, no additional fee requirements. You know, while...
So eliminating the barriers on the city side, right? So residents can build if they want to, and they can do whatever they want to. I got you.
Yep.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody have testimony on this item?
I just want to comment, it was nice to see the rapid response that the staff gave to understand what the city was looking for and then to hear the changes that we're complying to, to be part of the state and lower those barriers. I have clients that have built ADUs in other cities, and they, I've walked in at the completion, I've walked in the beginning stages, I've walked into their home in many different ways, and it's a very frustrating process. And so we have a lot of lots in the city of Lincoln that have extra land, and we have an aging population. And so specifically in our city, to make sure that we can have junior ADUs and ADUs and multiple options to allow them and that we complied and changed was really good. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, come on up.
Not gonna change anything. James Enston, former city council candidate. Yeah, I would just wish the city would take a more aggressive response, defensive response against the state and push back, right? You know, just say no. See what happens. Right? I mean, we're spending money, millions of dollars in other areas, right? You know, we're fighting stupid things. Why not push back at something that actually matters to the quality of life in Lincoln? I mean, we're letting people just build willy-nilly because the state... I mean, we're letting people just build willy-nilly because the state says so? We're not requiring parking, we're not requiring traffic, we're not requiring anything, right? Four-foot setbacks from fence lines? I mean, this is ridiculous. We moved here for a quality of life, and now we're just giving it away, and we're just throwing up our hands going, well, there's nothing we can do. Yes, there is. Say no. That's my comment.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Enson. Appreciate that. Hey, anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. Close the public hearing.
Mayor, just because I appreciate the comment. I want, just so that we all are operating on the same set of information. We agree, at least I agree, from a staff perspective, that I'd love to just say no. Problem is, is that, so the question is, what's the consequence of that? And what the consequence of that is that HCD will decertify your housing element. So you might say, so what? Just a document. But that triggers something that's called the builder's remedy. And the builder's remedy, once your housing element is decertified, swings the other direction where anyone can come in for any project, ADU or a thousand-unit apartment complex, and receive immediate approvals with no approvals at this body or any other. So that's sort of the hammer that has been used. And it is, it exists, and it has been used already in California. So that's our concern.
Oh, it's been used in neighboring communities already. Yep, yep, yep. So, don't disagree with you, sir, but we have to, well, we do have to pick our battles, right? And we do push back on the things that we feel like we can that are important. And not that this isn't important, but the ADU issue is not, it's not really, it's not going to make or break us, right? If somebody wants to build a house on their, in their backyard for their, you know, children or parents or whatever, like that, that's kind of the world we live in right now, so. All right, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask how many ADUs have come through in the last 12 months?
Question.
During the annual progress report, we reported, I believe, five of them.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, then I'll take a motion to approve item 8B.
Move to approve.
A little slow there, councilwoman. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right. All right, moving on to general business, item 9A. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to augment the fiscal year 2025-26 budget by $900,000, unencumber $900,000 from the approved 2026-27 budget, and authorize the purchase of one McNeelis Volterra electric vehicle residential garbage collection truck. Mr. Medill.
Good evening, Mayor Andriata, and members of the council and members of the public. Matthew Medill, Public Works Director. Tonight, I'm presenting on a budget augmentation request and the purchase of an electric garbage truck. We're going to go over the background. We're going to provide a reminder of the California Air Resources Board Advanced Clean Fleet Regulation. Talk about some fleet planning. We're going to describe the EV garbage truck details, and we're going to provide some recommendations. And I have a brief testimonial, a summarization of a testimonial from one of our garbage truck drivers that couldn't be here tonight. So as a reminder, Advanced Clean Fleet is a regulation adopted by the California Air Resources Board. It's in effect now, starting in January 1, 2024. 50% of our heavy-duty vehicles over 8,500 pounds needed to be zero emission. And starting in 2027, 100% of our vehicles over 8,500 pounds, other than, public safety is exempt, but for public works, all of our vehicles need to be zero emission. And the penalty is $10,000 per day fine. So if you recall, this sheet probably looks a little familiar. That's from our approved budget. You can see the clouded red circle shows the objective tonight is move the $900,000 from the 2026-27 budget and encumber those funds a year early in '25-'26. So we're requesting to advance the funds. We plan on applying for a $120,000 CARB HVIP grant voucher, which we were successful. If you recall, we purchased a flatbed Ryze-on-electric truck that has been serving us for almost a year now, and we were, that was fully funded by grants. Although we originally requested the budget, the $120,000 was supported fully by grants. The estimated arrival time is still after July 1 of 2026, so we still expect to actually spend the money in '26-'27. And why now? And one of the reasons I will be describing in detail what this vehicle is, which our drivers are very enthusiastic about, but we have two more diesel trucks that we have approved in the budget, which will be our last, unless regulations change or they're deferred, that will be the last two diesel garbage trucks that we'll be purchasing. And what I wanted to do, and what the team wanted to do, is get a hold of this truck in advance before the clock runs out of, or the sand runs out of the sand dile, and to decide whether we want to get a second EV and come back to this council and say, hey, this truck is much, it's a big improvement over what we have now. Instead of buying two more diesel, we'd like to advance our transition to EV. So that's why we're here tonight, to get that vehicle in advance so that we can make an informed decision on the second two trucks. So I'll describe the truck a little bit. It's a McNeelis Volterra, zero side loader. It's fully electric, and I'll go over some of the features. And it actually has a really cool video, but I wanted to keep it under five minutes, and that was two minutes, and it would take away from my airtime. But it has a slow, low step height. It has much better improved visibility, so a lot safer to be driving around our communities. Has an elevated driver workspace, advanced driver assistant program. You can see it's got cameras all the way around with like collision monitoring or detection. Has a zero radius vertical lift, so we can work in a lot of our communities, like our small gated communities, like across from the Lincoln Crossing clubhouse. I think it's maybe Equinox. But some of those tight areas that our garbage trucks really struggle to pick up, and in the tight courts, it has a much improved turning radius. Has a lot of onboard diagnostic equipment. It's obviously complies with CARB and EPA zero emission. And the guys that drove it, well, I'll read the testimony, but it has a lot more torque and power. It's much easier to drive around town, and the ride is, there's the comfort level, the ergonomics for the drivers is much improved. And for those that haven't done a garbage truck ride along, I'm sure we'd be willing to offer them. But it's like riding an amusement park ride, and I equate it to the Indiana Jones ride at Disneyland. That's what it feels like. So the fact they can work a full shift in that amusement park ride is very impressive. So when you talk about EVs, one of the main concerns is the battery, you know? Is this battery going to die? And we've tried three other EV truck batteries, and they did die, or they didn't charge, and they were extremely problematic. This truck did the first day, it was a light day, it only used 20% of the battery. The second day was a heavy day, it used 40% of the battery. It has a 498-kilowatt-hour battery, which is a big battery. Most of our passenger light duty, like Teslas or, you know, Ford Lightnings, they have like a 7D to 110 kilowatt-hour battery. So it's about five times the size, so it's a very big battery. I did include in this presentation, I did not include it in the staff report, I just got it today, but the warranty terms, because I was anticipating a question, well, what's the warranty on the battery? The warranty on the battery is eight years, but you can see a lot of the different components. Most of the warranties are one to three years. But I can share this digitally if we want to think about it beyond tonight. But there is a warranty. And then before I go to the staff recommendations, I'm just going to read a short summarized testimonial from our refuse truck driver, James Schwartz. He expressed, "The Volterra EV garbage truck offers a superior driving experience compared to our current fleet. Its purpose-built design provides a smoother, quieter ride, significantly reducing driver fatigue. The cab is more comfortable and stays cooler, avoiding the heat issues of cab-over-diesel engines." And he more descriptively described it. But the engine, they sit over the engine, and there's a center, so it gets extremely hot in the summer, too, because they're basically sitting on top of the diesel engine. So I didn't even realize that because I went out in the morning, and it was cool when I was in the truck. I'll continue. "Which also benefits electronic equipment, like the Trevorware, our IT department's internally-developed truck routing optimization software, where we do have problems with the electronics overheating. Obviously, it stays cool in this one. The truck's long-lasting battery eliminates range concerns, and its tight turning radius enhances visibility from a large windscreen, and cameras improve safety, especially in tight neighborhoods. While some drivers may resist change, minor adjustments like larger mirrors can address concerns. Overall, the driver finds the Volterra safer, more comfortable, and better suited for the job. And I see Veronica sitting to my side and Christine, and we do have incidents where our drivers do hit cars or in between cans. There's a lot of tight quarters, and the safety improvements would probably save the time of the city attorney and our risk manager and reduce claims. And I would appreciate that, too. So I like the safety enhancement features." So tonight, we ask you to adopt the resolution, authorize city manager to augment the 25-26 budget by $900,000. Again, moving it over one column to the left, authorize the city manager to execute a $900,000 purchase order for the procurement of a McNeelis Volterra EV residential garbage truck, and I'm available for questions.
Thanks, Matt. All right, I know you have questions, so we're going to go to you first.
So Matt had shared some of this before, but I just wanted to kind of share it publicly. So the approximate cost difference between a diesel and the EV garbage truck, what is that delta?
The diesel truck is about $470,000. This one's $900,000 before. Hopefully, we have the $120,000 California HVIP grant.
So about 2X without the grant?
Yeah.
Give or take, okay.
Yeah.
And then what did you determine was the estimated cost savings per year in operations from EV versus a diesel truck?
Based on the daily operational cost with a 15 cents per kilowatt-hour electricity rate, it was about $30 per day to operate, where we spend $80 a day in diesel to operate. And then there's also things like reduced brake jobs and oil changes that, you know, EV maintenance is typically lower, but, you know, this is a new product. I don't work for that company. I'm not going to sit up here and say these are going to be maintenance-free. I don't know. But typically, electric vehicles are lower maintenance, and it saves probably 2/3 of the actual energy cost of operating the vehicle, which could be substantial if expanded across the entire fleet.
If you had to just put a number, an estimated number on it?
It was $13,000 in energy savings at the 15 cents per kilowatt. But when we charge at night and we're more like nine cents, it's going to be, you know, maybe $60 per day in savings, so maybe $15,000 to $20,000 annually in operational savings.
One of the things that, thank you. One of the things you shared was that this truck is 10,000 pounds heavier than a diesel.
Yes.
And then you shared with me, and I'm beginning to get my head around like the metrics of how that wears on a road.
Yeah.
And so one of the concerns that I have is, I mean, we have to go this route, we have to go this route, but it also feels like we need to have a mitigation plan for having a half dozen of these things rolling around the streets.
Yeah.
And what that's going to do to our roads and that are already in certain shapes and certain places that we already need to address. And what thought, if any, have we given to the impact of this? And what mitigation do we need to be, should we be considering the mitigations now? Are we going to help?
Well, we've expressed the concern in our annual meeting with Caltrans and all the regional stakeholders, including, is it SAGCOP, Ben? Yeah, with SAGCOP. We've expressed that, and the sentiments are mutual. Caltrans is also concerned. A lot of these EV trucks, garbage trucks when fully loaded would exceed their 80,000-pound limit. So there's concern across the board, you know? It'd be great if Caltrans could talk to CARB. But there is some concern. So with that calculation, that equivalent single-axle load calculation, what John honed in on was there's a 50% increase with that 10,000 pounds, there's a 50% increase in the cracks and rutting that could be attributed to that increase in weight. And one of the ways these trucks mitigate it is they have a fourth axle that can drop, so it'll again spread that load, minimize that load. But I would say there might be an impact. Now, I didn't extend that to look at, okay, of all the traffic load, you know, how much does that move the needle? Does that move the needle 2%? I did not go to that extent, but for that single vehicle, because of that 10,000-pound increase, that vehicle does 50% more degradation than a vehicle that would be 10,000 pounds lighter.
The last question I had for you is, we're moving it forward, and I guess, you know, if we're not going to pay $10,000 a day not to comply to this, so we're going to comply in '27, but obviously, we can keep running whatever we buy between now and '27 until their end of life, right? It's just only new things after January '27 have to be 100%?
Yes.
Okay. So by bringing it forward, what's in my head, and tell me if I'm wrong about this assumption, but what I have is, we're bringing it forward so that we have firsthand knowledge, and we're spending $300,000 to $400,000 more, depending on the grant, to have firsthand knowledge of an EV versus waiting a year like we originally planned and seeing how other people are experiencing it with a secondhand evaluation? And what's the trade-off, and is that really worth moving it back a year?
Well, just like we do with our water system, we like planning ahead. Just like we do with our source water and planting wells, and we plan expansions of water treatment plants, we're planning ahead to be prepared. There's a steep learning curve with this. So we want to get a jump start, just like we do with our water system. We don't want to wait till the last minute, you know, and not be prepared. We want to get out in front of this. We want to learn. Some of our mechanics might need some high-voltage training, and we want to get familiar with this technology. But, you know, that's part of it, and part of it is, the drivers are telling me this is a much-improved product, and, you know, I want to support our team. They're the ones out there doing the job every day, even on holidays, so they're excited about it. They've asked me, hey, let's get our hands on this early. We might not want to buy two more diesel trucks. So yes, I would say there is a, there is a cost, you know? There's a cost in additional degradation for this one truck. But I, you know, we put together staff report. I worked on this because I thought, you know, it was a good decision to move forward, and that's my recommendation, but.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback. I just want to kind of contextualize it. And then also, just to reaffirm, even if you, we had diesels all the way up until '27, and then we start buying EVs in '27, the existing ones last seven or 10 years, right? So there, even once we make the first purchase, there is still some gradual slope for onboarding, for training, whenever we do start that process.
There is a gradual slope, and I did ask how many garbage trucks that do we have that are, that have we purchased since 2019, and we have eight. So at least we have a five-year runway. Yeah, where if we said we're stopping all purchases. But the problem is, these vehicles, even the diesel vehicles are extremely maintenance-intensive from the day of purchase. They become, you know, very difficult to maintain. The problems get more expensive and more complicated to fix, and these need to roll every day. So what we anticipate is this might be less maintenance, too.
Yeah. I mean, I'm an EV driver, and I can attest to the reduced operating costs, so I'm totally with you. My last question for you is, are there other jurisdictions that you've talked to that have currently had them in service for a period of time? I think it's, this particular model's been around for a year, couple of years?
I have not.
Okay, so we had a test run, but we haven't talked to other jurisdictions to see what they're like.
Yeah, this is relatively new technology, but we have tested the others, and I know our fleet supervisor has been talking to vendors, talking. But have I personally got a referral now?
Just to see if anyone else has any like history with the vehicle and what their maintenance experiences?
Yeah, when I went to the, I believe it was the CalCity's Public Works Officers Institute last year, there was, there was one jurisdiction that had ordered an electric garbage truck. But I think this is, this is pretty new, like statewide, so, yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So the one that our guys tested, that was a loaner, that was just like a trial?
And we, yeah, we tested it for two days, yeah.
For two days, okay.
Yep.
All right, let's just say that we do buy this one, and then we decide that we're not going to buy the other two diesels that we've already budgeted for. We're going to get more EVs. Do we, do we have the funding for those two more? I mean, obviously, the two diesels are in the budget, but.
What I suggested was we use the fund, and this is just my suggestion. I have not routed this through Nita or Sean. But my idea was that we have the funding for two diesels. We could, again, come back to council and say, hey, this one's great. It's fully improved, we haven't had any issue with it. Rather than getting two diesel trucks, we'd like to purchase. Rather than getting two diesel trucks, we'd like to purchase one EV and cancel the two diesels.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if you were saying that earlier, because that makes sense, or if you were saying two more EVs, and like, how do we make that? Okay. That makes sense. Okay. You guys have questions?
I have a question. Is there a chance that the battery will die before the useful life of the truck ends, and we have to replace the battery, which I understand is hugely expensive in regular cars?
Yeah, I actually looked, and typically, a battery of this size would be $50,000. So the warranty is eight years. Generally, the battery technology that I've seen in EVs are far outlast, you know, several hundred thousand miles. They do have degradation, up to like 2% degradation a year. So 2% is a conservative estimate, so that would leave us 80% at the 10-year life. So again, if we use 40% of the battery in a day, even with that reduced capacity, that's much more than we would need for a heavy day out picking up garbage. So I have no concerns of the battery life, as long as it holds up to like what every other standard EV battery life is.
What happens at the end of the life? Do we sell it to someone else and they recondition it and reduce price?
Yeah, typically, and I did anticipate that question, too. Typically, we retire, we have our trucks in service seven years, and then three years in reserve status as a backup, and then we surplus them. And the last truck that we surplus, we got $70,000 for.
Perfect. Thank you.
I don't have any additional questions, but I really appreciate my fellow council members' questions, because that covered everything, and I feel very informed now with my decision.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, James, you can first. Hold on, come to the mic first, that way people at home could hear.
Love the idea of electric garbage trucks. Love the presentation. I agree with Councilman Reedy. I think we may be moving too quickly on this. We should, we should get a reference customer and see how their experience has been. We should look at the cost of the replacement battery and the maintenance and things like that. And if we wait six months or eight months, like, what's the downside?
That's a great question, and I missed a very big point in my presentation and in my staff report. Originally, this vehicle was 1.1 million, and they said that if we placed the order, perfect sales tactic, right? That they would, we negotiated several times, actually, at one point, there was an EV charger, that $60,000 EV charger, but they reduced the price by 200,000 if we'd order in September. I almost feel like I'm the sleazy salesman now. I did totally forget that, but that's my closer now. But yeah, they did offer us a $200,000 cost reduction, because their standard price is 1.1 million. And I totally forgot, and, yeah.
No, thanks for the question, because that helps. So if we did order it, how long is the order time? Is it backlog? Or is it something like if we did wait a year?
They said they could get it to us in July, but I'm not holding my breath. For the diesel garbage trucks, the typical delivery is 12 to 18 months.
Because that's, that's an issue, too, right?
Yeah. And that's why I wanted to order it now, because I figured if we didn't, we might not get it before the end of this two-year budget and, or before 2027, and then we wouldn't know. So...
We're also a little bit concerned, I mean, I'd love to just not do this, honestly, but I'm a little concerned. One of the things that we've kind of noticed on the fire side, Chief McKee and I were talking about this the other day, the kind of monopoly that's been created on the fire truck side, is the rush of compliance as we lead ourselves through '26 and into '27. So you gotta imagine, there's 482 cities in California, that's not including all the other haulers that are not part of an organization. That's a lot of demand that's going to be crammed into a brief period of time. And so could we wait? Yeah. But the downside is, is that we're gonna be stuck potentially, if we have a massive failure with a diesel or a couple of diesels, we may not be able to source these. And the law does not, you know, it seems like the theme of the night is state overreach and local control issues. But there's no provisions that I'm aware of in that legislation that says, oh, hey, you know, if it doesn't exist, oh, well, you know, you're off the hook for a year, too. That's not really how it works. So we're a little bit concerned about that, too. We're sort of, we're reading the tea leaves in a very kind of fluid situation.
And I got a second closer. I forgot, the cost of a garbage truck is not 470,000. The garbage, the cost of a garbage truck is about 540,000, because we also have to buy a Ford Lightning.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Thanks. Yeah.
Maybe you're ready.
That's fine. Are you sure?
Just one last comment to your point. The savings would be about $25,000 a year. The savings would be about $25,000 a year, electric versus diesel, right? And then maintenance. So you just, you know, multiply that out over eight years, seven years, eight years. You're not gonna make up the difference. So I think it's a little expensive.
Well, nobody agrees, disagrees with you. It is expensive. The truck is expensive.
I mean, just, you know, the last time I stood before you, I said the cameras were expensive. We should go back and negotiate harder. I think we should go back and negotiate harder. So that's just my comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's a different situation, but, you know, just as a side note, we've been working with a colleague, council member from a different city near us, who's working on an initiative of trying to push the state for reimbursement for all these unfunded mandates. And Lincoln is on board with that. So like, the state pushes down, you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do this. Well, how are we gonna pay for that? And this is exactly one of those things. Yeah, the EV garbage trucks are super cool, but they're very expensive. The first outlay, they save money over time, but they're very expensive. And so that's something that, you know, I'm committed to, is working on that initiative of like, I mean, we may not get anywhere with it, but at least we can push back and say, you can't pass all these unfunded mandates and expect us to be able to handle all that. We just don't. So, okay, there were several hands for public comment who would like to, okay, Dan, you can come, yeah, come on up, and then, after her, and then you, Dan. So her first, and then you.
Al Kubo?
Hi.
I live in Sun City. I understand that this is a mandate that we really have to comply with, but the roads in this city are really not good. We've got a ton of development coming on that's gonna make it even worse, and now we're putting on all these EVs. Does the state have grants? Do they have anything? What is going to be done about our roads? Because it's, I'm ready to sue the state because it's damaging my car.
Yeah.
So is there any, I mean, we've known about this for a while. So what's been, the mandate has come. We've known about it for a while. So what's being done about the roads?
Right, well, in our, in our city, our roads, we have a schedule, and so we work on the worst ones first, and then we work our way up, and then we kind of start all over again. So we work on roads all the time. So, and this mandate has been coming, and we've been planning for it. That's why we're here. So we don't disagree with you that there are roads that need to be fixed, but we have a schedule for that, and we work on them all the time. So, yep.
You have a schedule for that?
The roads, yes.
Is it based on a budget? Is that the reason that more roads aren't getting?
Yes, yes. We fix as many as we can in a year with the money that we have, and we start with the worst ones first and work our way up.
So will the cost savings coming from EV be applied to road maintenance?
Good question.
No.
Yeah.
Because there, because there is no real cost savings. And so everything that you said, we agree with. The way that we fund road maintenance in Lincoln and everywhere, outside of a standalone road measure, is through gas tax. And gas tax has been a dwindling and dying tax for many, many years. And weirdly, it's kind of a treatment of the same issue, right? As more people move away from using gas and aren't paying that tax at the pump, it's not like PG&E is tacking on a little bit onto your bill that then comes back to the cities to redo roadways. So the legislature still hasn't really figured out how they're going to bridge the gap, and the gap is widening daily, which I had a better answer for you.
They have, get ready for miles traveled tax. That's what they're doing.
But a lot of cities have made the developers that are bringing in the more housing and the more cars pay for it upfront.
Yeah, we charge a transportation fee on every single new home that builds in Lincoln in the tens of thousands of dollars per home. What the law says, though, is that you are not allowed to use fees that you collect from new development to treat existing conditions. So to the extent that they have an impact, we can use those monies in that way, and we do. But if we're talking about an area like, for example, where I live, that's pretty mature, it can't be used there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dan, come on up.
Okay, I'm not an expert on this. I just thought I'd bring up some issues, because I have been looking at electric cars and so forth. One of the main issues I have with electric vehicles is the price of the batteries. Those things only last for a while, and the price keeps going up and up and up. In addition to that, I remember reading that a garage, a garage collapsed in New York because of the weight of pickup trucks and all these electric vehicles, the weight of them in this old-fashioned garage made it actually collapse. That's another thing. But the big thing I have here in California, we're having enough forest fires as it is. Now, you might want to check with the fire department, because I'm not a fireman, but I understand it takes five times more water to put a fire out on one of these vehicles when they catch fire. And we're surrounded enough by fires right now in California. We don't need anymore. And then in addition, of course, are these streets. The streets are in terrible, terrible condition, especially like Third Street on the other side of the tracks over there. It's terrible. So I just want to bring up this stuff, but the main thing is, there's one other thing that really kind of bothers me. And as batteries are made with child labor, and if you look at it, it's slave labor in the Congo and all over, it's these cobalt mines, and nobody ever talks about that. All they talk about is, oh, it's nice and clean and everything else. It's toxic, it's a toxic environment. I know we can't get around it, but we can certainly push back on it. So those are just a few of the things that I think we need to look into and maybe bring to attention. And then, of course, the last thing is our electric grid. We have blackouts in the summer as it is. Where are we gonna get all this electricity? We can't use coal, we can't use this, we can't use that. But what they're doing is they're building these solar panels, taking up acres and acres of land, and all we're doing is subsidizing the Chinese government with these social, solar panels. And those things need maintenance. So I mean, we really need to kind of look at this whole thing, but that's up to you people. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Dan, very much. Thank you. Okay. All right. Sella, come on up, and then, you can come after, Sella.
Madam Mayor, I wanted to bring to your attention that our school board is, has an initiative for solar panels going into multiple schools, and they are putting a charging station in for their buses. So as this mandate is coming on, it's for good reason, that we make sure that we coordinate or try to find out how we can save costs, because we're all in one building in one city serving. I do want to ride along in this, and if our treasurer, our city assistant city manager are in support of this budget, then I want to say that I'm sure it's been vetted well. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, the city is already embarking on our own solar project, which is gonna save us several millions of dollars over the next 30 years. And so, yeah, we're right on track with that, Sella. Zerlinda, if you want to come on up? Good to see you. Been a while. Yeah. So, Sella, I got it. Thank you.
Very informative, and I appreciate that you were passionate about your employees' safety and comfort. And I agree with Mr. Reedy about maybe we can get input from a jurisdiction that is using these trucks right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So that's a, that's a great point, but I just want to, and I don't disagree, but I just want to clarify, this is so new, though, do, are there a lot of cities who have been using this, where we could get a referral or some information?
That's a really good question.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah. Maybe we could find out. Yeah.
Yeah. But we, you know, I have a lot of faith in our team and our mechanic, our mechanic staff that thoroughly evaluated this. I mean, we had the whole team out there watching the operation. They drove it, they drove it on a heavy day. So we definitely gave it the very thorough test drive.
Okay. Anybody else? I saw several hands. Okay, all right. Oh, well, you already, you already did. You already spoke. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Okay, anybody on Zoom? Okay. All right, we'll close public comment on this and bring it back to the council. I don't know, this is, this is a challenge, because there's things on both sides. There's reasons to wait, there's reasons not to wait.
Can I, a quick question for you?
Go right ahead.
So you, I don't really want to lose the, I don't want to spend $200,000 more already, but what, how does the contract work? So for example, if we said, okay, pull the trigger on the last day of September, so it gives you some time to do some of this vetting we're talking about without losing this $200,000 savings, which we don't want to lose. And then what if we learn more after that? Like, how does the contract work in terms of like backing out of it? If we do some more research and we discover these things are breaking down in whatever high temperatures versus, I mean, whatever the thing might be after you do some additional research? How does they work?
Typically, if we order a vehicle, we're gonna purchase that vehicle. That's a great question. How do you unwind that? I don't know. I would rather make a fully informed decision before we purchase, so I don't mind returning to council. I think we still have another meeting in September. Or we can, you know, maybe we can recommend approval if it passes the SNF test by the city manager, and I can do the research and report to him, and you could delegate that authority to him if, you know, we've found adequate references. I don't know that there will be any.
Would, from a logistics perspective, is it putting too close of a pinch if we say, bump this till the next meeting in September? Does that give you still enough time to pull the trigger and save the money?
Yeah.
And then do, try to answer some of these questions?
Yep.
That might, might be a...
Mike has, Mike, our fleet supervisor, has extended these types of offers months. So, you know, it's like, buy now, or it's gonna be gone tomorrow. Probably not.
And just to be like, super, super transparent, like, the point of, we don't usually agendize vehicle purchases on general business, it's just not, you know, usually it's just a consent item. We did this on purpose, because we kind of wanted to force this discussion in a general business setting, because it's a new purchase, it's a very expensive investment, it's not something we're super excited about either. And so this is sort of what we were seeking. So if the council would feel more comfortable if you had some, let's call it, character references from other organizations that have used these for a little longer than us, then great, we'll go source those.
I don't want our staff to feel like we don't care about their well-being, and I understand that it's better on their bodies and less beating up on them, and that's, that's a benefit of this. So I don't want them to think that if we decide to wait, that we don't care about that, because, because we do, but there's a lot to consider here. So I would say, I would feel more comfortable bumping this to the next meeting if we can do a little bit more research, if the council, if you guys have consensus with that.
I think what you're talking about is just doing additional due diligence.
Yes.
I think that's fine. I have a question. You were talking about state funding, and that typically in the past came under SB90,[1700.16] that typically in the past came under SB 90, state cost recovery. Is that still, is that program still available? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, but that's not, it's not very well funded. There's not a lot of dollars.
Yes, I agree with you. We're not funding it.
Well, yes, yes. Yes, the state agrees, and they don't typically fund it, yes. Okay, so then can we just decide to table this until the next council meeting?
Yes, we can table it, and we'll re-agendize it for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the item of the evening, 9B, adopt a resolution in support of fair representation for Lincoln residents. Ms. Mollencamp?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. My staff report will be brief in order to allow the council an opportunity to have a robust discussion. As you likely recall, this item was tasked to me at the conclusion of the last meeting under Council Initiated Business. And so, to that end, I worked with two council members, so as not to have any Brown Act issues, in order to craft the resolution that is before you this evening. I will make one notice that the, we did receive an email that requested we not reference the California, the League of Voters, Women, League of Women Voters, that's what it was. And so I did, there's been circulated to you, and there's a copy up on the desk of the revised version that did omit that reference to them. So with that, the California lawmakers are proposing efforts to place Proposition 50 on the ballot in November, which is also called the Election Rigging Response Act. If approved, this ballot measure allows the legislature to redraw the congressional maps, temporarily bypassing the state's independent redistricting commission that was adopted by the voters of this state several years ago. And so with that, I recommend that the city council discuss and consider adoption of a resolution in support of fair representation for Lincoln residents in response to the state's efforts to redraw those congressional maps, temporarily bypassing the commission.
Thank you. All right, who wants to go first?
So I asked for this resolution to be drafted, because protecting Lincoln's voice in government is one of our most important responsibilities as a council. Some have asked if this is really our role, and my answer is yes. City councils across California have taken positions on state and federal proposals when they directly affect our community. That's why the League of California Cities exists, to make sure cities defend their local voice. Our congressional representation is not abstract. It directly impacts Lincoln's ability to secure funding for infrastructure, wildfire protection, water resources, and economic development. If Prop 50 passes, Lincoln could be merged into districts dominated by Sacramento's urban priorities. It weakens our ability to advocate for the things that our residents need. California voters amended the state constitution in 2008 and 2010 to create the Citizens Redistricting Commission. They did that so politicians could not manipulate maps for partisan advantage, and so communities of interest like Lincoln would be kept whole. Proposition 50 would temporarily undo that reform and set, in my opinion, a dangerous precedent for future legislations to bypass this whenever it suits them. This resolution is not about partisanship. It's about standing up for the independents voters already put into our state constitution and making sure that Lincoln continues to have a strong and fair voice in our government. And just very quickly, I put together some examples of other times that city councils have taken positions beyond their local operations. Sacramento City Council has passed resolutions on climate legislation, immigration protections, federal health care cuts. LA has passed immigration, climate accords, federal voting rights legislation. San Francisco Board of Supervisors have passed resolutions on gun control, reproductive rights, foreign policy, and state ballot measures. Berkeley and Oakland have opposed federal immigration crackdowns, supporting climate initiatives, and endorsing and denouncing state ballot measures. Petaluma City Council, federal health care changes and state housing mandates. Lodi City Council just recently passed a similar resolution opposing Prop 50, citing risks of splitting their city into three different congressional districts. So therefore, city councils across California, large and small, regularly pass resolutions on state and federal issues when they directly affect their communities, and Lincoln is not stepping outside of our scope. We are following a longstanding precedent.
Thank you. I think I'll add to that. One of the things that concerns me is that this prop says it will be temporary. The problem with that is the independent commission, they're tasked with not making sweeping changes. They are tasked with keeping contiguous communities together, like communities, and the map that has been proposed, if that happens, then when the time period ends and the commission gets it back, then they're going to be hamstrung by not making sweeping changes. Again, they're going to be stuck with what is drawn. So when the legislation says it's temporary, it's not really temporary. It's going to stay that way. And to your, hold on, do not yell out. I give everybody a chance to speak. One of the examples that just happened, that we can point to this, advocating for Lincoln and Placer County, South Placer, Measure B didn't pass, so we weren't able to do the full Highway 65, but our Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the transportation team, which I was on, advocated to Kevin Kiley's office, regardless of whether you like him or not, he got us $22.5 million to help solve the 65 problem, which directly affects Lincoln. I think of all the South Placer cities, 65 there affects us the most. And that wouldn't have happened if, when we get chopped up into three different congressional districts with three different congressmen who have three different priorities, we're not going to be able to advocate for the people of Lincoln. So those are my concerns, and I agree with you. This is, this is not partisan in any way. This council, this council and prior councils have been very careful not to be partisan. That's not what we do here. And 99.9% of the time, we focus on just what affects our city. But when there are issues, okay, please don't whisper and talk in the audience. Everybody will have a chance to speak, but we're, this is our debate right now, and then we'll let you speak. So just stop talking in the audience, please. What I'm concerned about is, what I was saying is that when it directly affects us, right, like, we don't, we don't, you don't hear us talking about national politics hardly ever. You don't hear us up here opining about this bill or that bill or that congressman. We don't talk about that. We only bring it to us when it directly affects us, and I believe that this does. So, any other comments or questions right now?
I'll go with it at this point.
Okay.
I think everyone recognizes that this is just politics. It's just raw politics. We're angry with Washington. We're angry with what's going on in Texas. But as my mother used to say when I was very young, "Two wrongs don't make a right." And I think that's what's happening over here. The voters of this state, elected, the voters of this state voted for an independent commission for one very good reason, to take it out from partisan politics and do the best job possible. Is it perfect? Of course not. But it's the best that can be designed at this point. And I agree with my two colleagues that to take it for a number of years and then let it go back in, just the raw sense of politics that we should not be sucked into. You know, we do a very good job of voting in this country. We do a very good job of voting, certainly in Placer County, to just upend everything that is out there. And some of the more egregious things you said, and I think my colleague brought up the fact, Lodi splitting it into three. I don't know how long it took these guys and gals in the legislature to come up with a map, but it, I don't think it was more than, what, a couple of weeks? They just sat down overnight, and they just came up with it, where the independent commission takes a long time to do. They study it. We know what's happening. When we went to districts in our city, it took a long time for them to get it right.
Mm-hmm.
Is it perfect? No, of course it's not perfect. But it's the best that probably can be done, and we'll readjust it again after the next September elected census. So I think that while we may not agree with everything, I think we should agree with good governance. And I defy anyone to say that two wrongs make a right, and what we're trying to do is, what the state is trying to do is good governance. It's just raw politics, and we understand it, but I don't think we should agree with it.
And to pile on that, Councilmember Pearl, I don't, a lot of comments have been circulated around what Texas is doing. And I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's not an argument for me, because Texas was sued by the Biden administration, and they were ordered to do their redistricting, and whatever they're doing, they're doing because of whatever their reasons are. Texas doesn't have a state constitution like we do, where the voters put in, and so that's our law. And I've heard a lot of comments of like, let the voters decide on this. Well, we did. We did twice already. So we're going to go ahead, unless you guys want to jump in, we're going to go ahead to public comment. You have more cards for me? Okay. Okay. All right, let's start with Gail Link. And let me, let me just really quickly before you, let me just ask the audience, please do not clap or cheer or boo when someone's speaking. We want everyone to feel safe in expressing their opinion, whatever that might be. Okay, so thank you. Go ahead.
Lincoln, I understand what Ms. Eklund said about why she called for this, and how there are examples across the state for people using resolutions and endorsements to support, you know, maybe state measures, even candidates. But I, my reading of California Government Code 54964 prohibits that. And I will just read the first paragraph. "An officer, employee, or consultant of a local agency may not expend or authorize the expenditure of any of the funds of the local agency to support or oppose the approval or rejection of a ballot measure or the election or defeat of a candidate by the voters." That the code section does allow for these local agencies, like a city council, to provide information and how it will affect their community, their city. And looking online, I found that there were legal counsel letters to city councils across the state advising their council members of this. They make it clear that individual council members can, on their own time and dime, endorse measures and candidates, but as an entity, you're prohibited from doing that. Our legal counsel here tonight mentioned that they did get an email, this was one of my comments, and I didn't know about this, about removing the reference to the California League of Women Voters. I did not fact-check the draft resolution, but that whereas statement did stand out to me. And so I went to the league's website, and the reason why that person, I'm guessing, asked that it be removed, actually, it says, "Whereas numerous organizations dedicated to good governance and democratic reform, including the League of Women Voters of California, have opposed this partisan redistricting plan as contrary to California's democratic values." The league did state on their website, I saw this this afternoon, that early in the process, before the ballot language was written, they, along with other, several other good government groups, issued independent statements opposing mid-cycle redistricting, but they have considered a lot of things since then, which I won't read, but they have decided not to take a position on Proposition 50 and leave it up to the voters. So that was just, it may have shed some light on why the council is asked to remove that part of the resolution. So I do not support this draft resolution. I don't think it's appropriate. In fact, I think it's prohibited under California Government Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Is it prohibited under code? I think we've done these before.
The government section that was specifically referenced relates to if the council is putting forth a ballot measure or a bond measure of your own, that you're not allowed to expend money being a proponent for it. It has to be by the residents of the community, and you would be limited in that circumstance to only providing information.
Okay, next, Dan Catania.
Okay, without sounding partisan, this Prop 50 really should be Prop 50 slash Prop 13. And I say that because, let's face it, there's one party in this state that has been talking since 1979 to do away with Prop 13. And just a couple of years ago, there was an assemblyman on the Capitol steps saying that property taxes should be triple what they are right now, because they need funds for schools, et cetera, et cetera. They always need funds. They always need taxes. And I want you to think, if this thing goes through, what's it going to do to our property taxes? What's it going to do with the people that are living in this state on fixed incomes? What's it going to do to Lincoln with all the people we have living here that are in retirement and they're on fixed incomes? This thing is going to ruin our state. And to sit there and talk about these people, they come out there and say, oh, they want a democracy. They want a democracy. First of all, this is a republic. Second of all, this is the opposite of democracy. They're sitting there talking about they want complete and total control and to wipe out a certain party's candidates completely. That's a dictatorship. And once you have a dictatorship in place, it's not turning back. If they could unturn our state constitution and put us under a dictatorship, why would they ever release their power over us? They wouldn't. So I want to stress this point. I'm not an attorney, but we have a lovely city attorney here, and I'm just wondering if it's possible that we can join this federal lawsuit against this for the purpose of protecting the people in this state. I just shortly, I remember when I bought my first house in 1979, I was waiting for Prop 13 to come through. And I'll never forget a commercial. I seen a woman, she was in her 80s, standing in front of her house that was just foreclosed. There was weeds in the front yard. Her house was paid off in the 50s, but she could not live in that house. It was foreclosed because of property taxes. And that's what Howard Jarvis was stressing at the time. And I was not going to buy a house in California at the time if Prop 13 did not go through. I was going to be out of here. I worked for the airlines. I was going to transfer out. Imagine the people are going to be leaving here. I, for one, will be thinking about it. And I just want to say in closing, I want to thank everybody here in the city council. I want to thank this police department. We're the fourth safest city. I wish we were the first, but being fourth isn't too bad. So I want to thank all of you, and please, I don't know if it's possible, but I'd like to know if we can join that lawsuit and save Prop 13 in this state. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate that. Okay, next, Ann Sullivan. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ann. I live here in Sun City, Lauren Lincoln in Sun City. And as a former city clerk for a city council in the Bay Area, or for a city in the Bay Area, I am questioning the involvement of the city regarding Proposition 50. I know there is a lot of pros and cons on the political aspect here. I will not get into that. I'm strictly going to address the fact that in California, several codes and legal precedents prevent city councils and other public officials from using resources for political purposes. These laws draw a distinction between providing factual informational material and using public resources for partisan advocacy. California Government Code 8314 and the Political Reform Act is the most direct law prohibiting the misuse of public resources for political ends. City council can use public funds and resources for purely informational purposes, but not for express advocacy in favor of a specific ballot or proposition. I do feel that you've already used public resources for the publication of this agenda item and the resolution, as well as the cost of using council chambers to discuss this item and the work time based on the council members and the staff members that created the agenda, and the resolution is also involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rita Pizzioli.
Thank you. I do believe that a resolution in support of fair representation for Lincoln residents has to be viewed through the context of Proposition 50, and only through the lens of a no position that you can ensure fair representation for Lincoln residents. So let's look at the outcome of a no versus a yes support. A no position opposes the constitutional amendment keeping the existing congressional district maps in place. It preserves the California Citizens Redistricting Commission that the voters approved in 2008. It does not allow gerrymandering, and it protects fair representation. It stands up for accountability, transparency, and the rule of law. What's the result of a position of yes on Proposition 50? It ends independent maps. It ends independent maps. It lets politicians draw their own safe seats and totally ignores the bipartisan California Citizens Redistricting Commission and appearance of independence. And when you talk about the maps, one map, one part of the map that really stood out to me is Modoc County, very far north, very agriculture, will be combined with Marin County. The two have nothing in common with one another. It is an injustice to both counties. Second, it ends fair representation, and it hurts communities. It opens the door to gerrymandering. It ensures districts will be drawn by politician based on political advantage. It ends consistency of leadership by dividing and breaking up communities and neighborhoods. It undermines democracy. When Governor Newsom ignores the California Constitution Amendment voted for by our citizens, we lose our voice. This sets a dangerous precedent, and it weakens constitutional safeguards for fair elections. It silences voters. It eliminates public hearing and community input. It is illegal and unconstitutional. It violates constitutional provisions which ban partisan gerrymandering and bans legislative interference in redistricting. It opens the door to lawsuits over legislative interference. It is a costly waste of taxpayer money. They estimate a $250 million debt to ensure this special election, while California faces massive budget deficits and painful costs to healthcare, education, and housing.
But you can finish real quick.
Oh, I fully support your resolution. I do feel that the measure disregards the wants and needs of many people in California. Thank you.
Yeah. Next is Ruth Cox.
Hi, I'm Ruth Cox. I'm also a resident of Lincoln Hills. Thank you for having me today. I wanted to clarify initially some misstatements that have been made today. The redistricting that took place in Texas was not as a result of anything that Biden instructed. This was something that Trump asked them to do in order to deliver five Republican seats, additional Republican seats in Congress. So I think it's, it's important not to mischaracterize that. It's not illegal what we're doing here or unconstitutional. If that was the case, it would have been thrown out in court, and that is not, has not happened. And I think it's not a, we're not being merged into a Sacramento-based district. That's a very incorrect statement to make. We are being included in Congressional District Four, which comprises many suburban communities that are very similar to our own. You know, what is happening here is not what happened in Texas. Texas did not allow a vote. Everybody's talking about how we're changing things, but we're not changing anything until the voters decide that something's going to change. They didn't allow a vote on, on redistricting, nor did they meet any of the fair districting guidelines that have been published by Common Cause or other organizations. California did comply with both the Fair Maps Act and the Fair Districting Guidelines from Common Cause, and we are putting it to a vote. The redistricting is temporary, and I think, you know, we're very proud of what we've done here with nonpartisan districting. But Texas altered the rules mid-decade, and California must respond in kind to maintain a level playing field. We talk about fairness of representation. I, I don't want to live in it in Texas. Five additional Republican representatives from Texas in Congress are going to deliver the kinds of laws that they have in Texas that will override our laws here in California. National laws supersede state laws. So what you're going to have, when, if we don't respond and stand up for our values in the state of California, we're going to have people, women dying and, you know, bleeding out in parking lots because they can't get an abortion after a miscarriage. All right? You're going to have 500 people dying from a freeze because the governor in Cal, in the state of Texas was in bed with the utility district. Or you're going to have a criminal as your Attorney General, because that's what they have in Texas. Right? We don't live in Texas for a reason, we live in California. And so we are standing up for fairness for all of Californians, not just those in Lincoln. And I would question, you know, why, if you're so concerned about what's happening at a federal level, you did not speak up when the budget that was passed, the big ugly bill, is impacting so many of our citizens, taking away food assistance, healthcare. They're literally, the cuts to Medicaid are going to undermine the entire healthcare system that those of us rely on. And there was not a peep. So this is partisan. Because if you really cared, you would have stepped up and said, let's have a resolution about this unfair bill that's going to, you know, degrade the quality of many of the citizens of this city. So I think that this is not really the role that you should be playing to, to put your finger on the scale on an initiative that is very much a partisan strategy aimed at diminishing the influence of Democratic voters across the country. That's not good governance, to put your finger on the scale and disenfranchise voters. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Lori Wallace.
Thank you for bringing this up. We really appreciate you thinking about this and how it's going to affect Placer County. My name's Lori. I do live here in Lincoln. Prop 50 allows politicians to seize power from citizens, hands the power back to politicians to rig the system by drawing districts safe for their own cronies and guaranteeing their reelection. That's not democracy, that's entrenchment. Permits corrupt backroom deals. It eliminates public input and transparency by taking redistricting out of the public square, where more than 35,000 Californians participated in the last redistricting cycle, and it hands it to politicians behind closed doors. Prop 50 is not temporary, it will be permanent. Even temporarily killing off a piece of democracy sets a dangerous precedent that could be used by future politicians to undermine constitutional safeguards. Prop 50 is a dishonest ballot title. It's deceptively worded to suggest to voters that a yes vote would keep the citizens' redistricting process, when in fact, a yes vote eliminates the citizens from the process and hands the power back to the politicians. Thank you for taking this up quickly. This has been jammed down our throats, and we have about three weeks until ballots come out. Our own elections office is scrambling to get the ballot guide out. There was a lot of time and effort into drawing our lines for Placer County in the, in the context of congressional districts. We kept similar communities together, worked hard to do so, and the Independent Redistricting Commission adopted that, keeping Placer County fully in one congressional district. These new maps break Placer County into three different congressional districts. We should remain together. We are not the big city like Sacramento, should not be forced to have our district snake into Sacramento. Actually, Placer County was one of three counties that got people into it during COVID and the rush out of the state, instead of people leaving Placer County. Placer County is a nice county, let's keep Placer together. And using resources is different than taking a position. Don't use taxpayer dollars on this, but please pass the resolution. No on 50. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Stella Greenhouse. Oh, do you have more cards for me? Go ahead and bring them over. Nope, you're next. This one, we're not on the agenda. Okay. Go ahead, Stella.
Good morning, Mayor. What I understood from the presentation from the staff was this was a council-initiated business. And before I go into the topic, I do know that June 10th, there was council-initiated business by my district, Council Member Ben Brown, in regards to, and I think second by John Reedy, in regards to some guidelines around public comment. So I haven't seen that come to the agenda.
I'm sorry, what did you say, guidelines around what?
Public comment. And so I haven't seen that come to the agenda, so this is coming very quickly, and I do understand the timeframe that.
Yeah, say the topic of this item.
The previous speaker had spoke about, in regards to three weeks till hits ballots. What I understood is that the caution that I have is about retweeting, let's call that as the term, right? You hear something, and you go with that, and you retweet it, and you retweet it, and you retweet it, and you just go with that. And so I have a concern as a resident in regards to understanding the actual proposition, actually reading the proposition, hearing someone say this is what it's going to do, but not actually looking at the details to know what really happened and the facts around that. That really concerns me. As I hear people speak here today, my first initial, first initial thought when it came through was, you're speaking for me? I have to know what this is about. I have to understand, you're going to put my name in City of Residence, City of Lincoln, and say this is what I am going for? And that concerned me. When I read the part that says extending to include voters in Sacramento, we talk a lot about SECOG and how we're part of Sacramento. I didn't know exactly Proposition 50 was going to say, is it going to take in the, the south part of Sacramento? Is it going to take in the Rio Linda section and North Highland section? What part of Sacramento is the redistricting going to be coming apart? And that's probably the facts that I don't have, that I'm not comfortable with saying that I support or don't support this at this time. You know, and as we talk about the California Constitution, part of that preamble is that we're grateful to Almighty God for our freedom. And so to hear some of the members say that I have a freedom to say I don't have to join this entity, and that taking away from that is really concerning to me. I'll just close with understanding passion and fear and what can happen that can go forward, and how we may be making decisions off of passion and fear versus the facts. And so I want to ensure that you actually read the material that's there. If you're not ready to vote tonight, we can put it off till next week, like you did for the EV trucks. But more importantly, I'm really glad to see the public come out, and I know it makes our meetings a little longer for the staff. But the staff need that opinion, they need to understand where that's coming from and who they're serving, so they can continue serving them. So thank you.
Thank you, Stella. I guarantee you that we always come fully prepared, and we read everything that we are talking about. Lynda Young, Mayor. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have never, I think I've only attended one other city council meeting in my life, and I've never spoken at one before.
Glad to have you.
So, and, and I'm going to change a little bit because I've heard something, but I, I am, this should not be a place where we're debating yes or no on a proposition. We each get a vote. There is going to be a vote. That's our choice. I think what I came to say is I was rather aghast when I heard that the city council of Lincoln was going to write a resolution and put their finger on the scale. You are going to influence people. And I just didn't, I thought city councils did what I was listening to earlier. You take care of roads, you buy vehicles, you take care of things. You don't weigh in on federal politics. It seems to me that the governor proposed something in the context of what was going on. I know we all don't agree on maybe that that context is the same, but that is what is being proposed, is that California will change their redistricting rules one time, and it will change back at the new census in 2030. It seems to me you each have a vote, you have your own personal vote, as I do, and maybe you do have the right to give out information. But when I was looking at some of the things that you in the resolution were concerned about, one of them was about being linked in with other districts. And yet, I think in this congressional district, there are huge differences. There's a big income difference, I think, between Rockland and Auburn. I looked it up, it was pretty big. I mean, they're very rural counties, there are suburban counties. My understanding is we would be linked in with other suburban counties. As a Democrat, I have not felt very represented, represented in this particular district that I moved into. However, I understand that's what democracy is. Somebody is going to win an election, and somebody's going to lose an election. Now, hopefully, our representatives represent all of us. I personally don't feel very represented by mine, but that is neither here nor there. I don't know why you would think that you wouldn't be represented by somebody else. I mean, you talked about long-term planning. It's like you can't, you don't have like a fix-in or anything, that you're always going to get a Republican representative, and that's going to allow your planning to go in that direction. Every two years, you're going to get a new election. So I don't know why we, we are concerned that a new person would change things. It might even change things for the better. We don't know. Maybe that whole taxing for 65 would have gone better if we weren't asking people up in South Lake Tahoe to put money into something that they don't even have never seen. So anyway, I wish that you would consider joining the League of Women Voters and not taking a stand and letting everybody else make their own choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. For clarification, this last election, Measure B, the only cities who voted on that were Lincoln, Roseville, and Rockland. We did not ask Tahoe to vote.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's correct. And then also, to your point, I understand your, your points, and I really appreciate your input. The, the, the problem with lumping us in with unlike communities, and, and we don't have a problem, you know, if, if, if Kevin Kiley was not elected, fine, we'll work with whoever is elected. It's not about him, we're not trying to save him. What it is, is that we advocate together as a county. We, specifically South Placer, we advocate together, we did that together, and we got money for 65. If we are chopped up, and we are linked with other people who have different priorities, and they don't care about what's going on here, we cannot advocate for your needs. So that, that's our point. But I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you. Okay. June Paquette.
My name's June. I live in Sun City. I've lived here for almost 25 years, actually. I'm the reason that you got the email from the California League of Women Voters. I knew very well their position. They made it very clear, once that glossy ad came out, that they were not part of any organization that was advocating for or against Proposition 50. So I was a little surprised then, when I read your resolution, and you cited them as a good governance organization that would support your position. So I did email the state, and that is why you each received an email yesterday. In the best of all worlds, we wouldn't be even having this conversation. I believe in a citizens' board determining boundaries, that is what we voted on. But in the greater context of what is going on in the country, then perhaps our thought process is looking at the greater context, the greater impact. And that's a decision for each and every one of us as an individual. Prop 50 is not being shoved down our throats. It is a proposition. You can see the maps online. You will know very well where we are located in the district. If the voters do not want it, it does not pass. As voters, we should be making our own minds up, gathering our own information. We can seek out experts, but bottom line is, I don't think that's your job. Your job is to oversee the operations of the city, look out for the development of the city, our safety and protection. And in fact, if you were really concerned about safety and protection, perhaps you'd be more involved or taken more advocacy with our representative on things like environment, like public health, like access to affordable healthcare. So I believe that the California voter has enough information at their fingertips to make their own informed judgment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Melville.
Mark Melville, 20-year Lincoln resident. I'm representing some
Mark Melville, 20-year Lincoln resident. I'm representing some friends and neighbors who cannot make it tonight. I just want to say we support the city council, and we support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Sandy, there was no last name. Sandy. Oh, there you are. Hi, Sandy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being public servants of the people, for upholding and defending the constitutions of this great nation and this state. So let's not forget what the highest law of the land is. I'm going to be reading a few excerpts from Mark Musser of the Dillon Law Firm. Texas did not have to redraw four minority coalition districts because of President Trump. Texas had to redraw the lines because Biden sued Galveston County, and the law was clarified, the coalition minority districts were unconstitutional. Since Texas law requires that the Texas Legislature draw the congressional districts, the Texas Legislature followed the law. However, the California Constitution prohibits the California Legislature from drawing congressional districts, and instead places that responsibility on the independent redistricting commission. And we've already talked about how the voters voted for that vote two times. So the California Legislature has violated the California Constitution. Unfortunately, the California Supreme Court has refused to require the California Legislature to defend their unconstitutional acts, and simply dismissed the writ without even deciding the merits of the matter. He goes on to say that he is bearing another lawsuit that will be filed, but it's important that the voters of California stand up against the unconstitutional actions of Gavin Newsom and the California Legislature by voting no on November 4th to Proposition 50. So thank you so much for having this resolution, and I support your actions in this, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate it. Okay, that's all the cards I have, but you can still speak if you didn't fill out a card. Is there anybody else? Okay, you first, and then over here. So come on up and speak in the mic.
Can't imagine how worried my wife is at the moment. Hi, I'm Robert West. I'm a member of Lincoln Hills, or resident Lincoln Hills. I think I have just two things that are important in thinking about this, not necessarily making a position. Number one, as a former salesperson, if I want to sell you something, I don't want you to know what you're doing. I want to create urgency. We have way too much urgency in this issue. Number two, last time I checked, Texas hasn't voted yet. California's response was because Texas redrew their maps, and obviously all those people are going to be Republicans. Are they? They haven't voted yet. We don't know that. That's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. The other hand? Okay. Yeah. Awesome.
I want to, I'm Michelle again. I want to clarify a few things about how this occurred. And indeed, it did come about because of a lawsuit that was started by the Biden administration in conjunction with the ACLU. They claimed that Texas was violating the voter act by not representing these minority groups appropriately. So ACLU got in because of civil rights, all of that. Now, since that time, since President Trump became president, the United States has backed out of that, and the courts have ruled that these coalitions of minorities couldn't be represented. They had to be represented by individual. But it did start with the lawsuit, and the governor of the state said, okay, we'll redistrict. We're going to try and make it more representative. He doesn't have to have a vote. They do have a law that allows him to do that. I have evidence of the lawsuit, but I don't have any evidence that Donald Trump, I don't see anything in writing saying he wanted that done. It started before he was ever in office. If you want to talk about fingers on the scale, in California, we've got an entire state of conservative people that are not represented. We took 40% of the vote in the last election, but we only have 17% of the representatives. So we aren't getting represented. And doing this would give us even less. It's blatantly illegal. We have voted twice that we want an independent commission to draw the maps. And if you want to know why we shouldn't go forward, it's $250 million that this state can't afford. That's why we shouldn't be doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, James?
Hi. James again, former city council candidate. Two observations. One is, I think your tone and tenor changed when this conversation started. I don't know if you're aware of that.
I'm sorry, my what?
Tone and tenor towards the audience changed right before this.
Nope.
I don't know if you were aware of that.
I've been very polite to every person. Go ahead, continue.
I'm not saying you haven't, but I, just an observation.
Okay.
Two, to Mr. Pearl. You said two wrongs don't make a right. So here's my question for you. I'm a Democrat.
Actually, you need to address your comments to me, not to them.
All right. To the city council. Two wrongs don't make a right. How is my voice, how is my vote, how is my feeling being represented by you? So we're going to suppress my voice, my feeling, my vote with the resolution that I don't approve of, that nobody ever asked my opinion about. We're going to suppress that. Isn't that wrong? I would say that's wrong. How does that make it right? It's not right. The city council needs to stay out of political matters, in my opinion, and not put the fingers on the scale of justice, in my opinion. To the speakers that have come before you and said, oh, this, oh, that about the proposition, all the proposition does is say, hey, let's have a vote. Nobody's done anything yet, other than say, let's have a vote. And the voters can decide. That is democracy in action, right? The voters get to decide. Here, in this case, the city council is about to vote on a resolution that does not represent all of the people that it represents. It is going to put its fingers on the scale of justice without a vote. How is that democracy? It is not. So please, keep this in mind. You represent everybody, everybody in the city, not just your personal opinions. If you have an opinion, put it on Facebook. God knows I do.
You sure do.
I do. We have exchanges, right? Make your feelings known on Facebook, or your social media, or in your church groups, or wherever you go. You can do that. That's totally legal and fine, and I support that and encourage that. But as a city council, do not take a position on a measure, or a candidate, or anything political. That is not your job. Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay. And was there anybody waiting online, too? Okay, okay, okay. So we'll do, is there Lynda? We'll do online, and then we'll get to Mr. Chapman.
I just wanted to mention, well, what Councilmember Eklund mentioned, it wasn't, it wasn't for any group. It was for Lincoln residents, and what you said, it wasn't just, she's not taking one side or the other. It was for Lincoln residents, for the, for the betterment, if not like, for Lincoln residents. She didn't go one way or the other. And I'm fully supporting the fair representation, the resolution, and support a fair representation for Lincoln residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's do online, and then we'll get to Mr. Chapman.
Lena Lebowski, you have been unmuted. Please provide your public comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I really, really appreciate you bringing this resolution forward. I appreciate it a lot. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk, well, just, you know, bring it to a vote to the people. We have voted two times. We voted to have our commission represent us on these matters. This special election is a revenge election, and it's costing us $250 million. And I appreciate you doing the resolution on the city's behalf. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lena. One more.
Okay, Karen Oaks, you have been unmuted. Please provide your public comments.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you so much for your service to the city and the residents who are here and who depend upon you for our resources, for our livelihoods, and for frankly, our survival. I wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I believe that Texas has in fact signed into legislation on August 29th, the new districts. So the comment that was made earlier, I think maybe needs to be updated to reflect that Texas has in fact moved on their decision on this. I wanted to also make note that I think personally, I'm a little disappointed about some of the comments that have been made tonight by city council members that feel very partisan. I know all of us are really highly charged at this point in time, but I think when we're talking about an EV garbage truck, the attitudes about California's efforts for clean air need to be, again, reflective of all of your residents here, some of whom have health issues and other concerns that could be very well supported by some of California's other laws. And again, to, again, agree with the person who spoke, you need to think in terms of representing everyone who lives here. And I think that some of the comments tonight have not been reflective of that. The bipartisan redistricting commission was in fact empowered by the people, and it only retains its power with support from the people. There have been multiple votes taken over time in history. All of them always reflect the context of the moment and the global affairs that potentially influence the people who are voting. I think that each of you tonight have suggested that you can in fact exercise your own choice, your own vote as individuals at the time the election is here and that the ballot is presented to you. I think that you also show perhaps a lack of trust in the people of Lincoln, and in fact, that maybe that needs to be looked at, because the voters of Lincoln and of California can best decide what is best for themselves and for their lives at this point in time. I support 50. I believe it is a vote for improved welfare for all of the residents. I believe it is a vote for healthcare. It is a vote for veterans. It is a vote for transparency. It is a vote for dignity, and it is a vote for humanity. I do not think it is your role as a council to take a position on this as an entity. I believe instead it is your option to vote as individuals, just like the rest of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Byron Chapman, Twelve Bridges area. In my world, not anyone else's, I can be very, very leaning on one way, friend, colleague, somebody I work with, be very, very compassionate about that particular item. In my world, I can still be friends with them. It doesn't cause me to be indifferent. It just makes me realize that there are opinions out there, and I have mine, and people have theirs. One of the speakers here this evening did make a point, and I'm simply going to bring it up, and my answer is, just watch the tape. Because what you're going to see is that many of the people that came up here and said, we disagree with the council is thinking about doing, the rebuttals started, and it came a lot from the mayor. Look at the tape. You don't have to take my word for it. I was watching the entire whole process. What we have here shouldn't be decided on a level of what the city wants to do for its residents. What we need to do is do what we do, and that is vote, vote our conscience, do whichever way you want to. Hopefully, no one will hold a grudge. Some people do. That's not in my world, but I don't speak for the rest of the world. But what I do say is that there has been a little bit more leniency from the council to drive a directive, rather than simply allowing everyone to say their piece and let it go with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. So I'm going to give you a rebuttal here. I'm not sure about your comment about being more lenient. I said there's actually several people in here who don't agree with us, who went over their time, and I let them finish. I let them go way over their time. And it is the mayor's prerogative to bring clarity, or to ask a follow-up question, or to, or to correct something. So watch the tape. Absolutely watch the tape. And so before I continue, any other comments? Anybody else? Last call. Darla, come on up, ma'am. Sorry. You've been so quiet tonight.
So I've been a resident here for 65 years. So out of all the times that I've been here to the meetings, I've never seen something like this about politics in our town like this. I understand you guys have a concern about maybe if 50 passes, what could happen to our city. But again, like some of the people said, it may not pass. You guys can put a sign in front of your house, a big one at that, and put, no 50. Or you could put a sign that says, yes, 50. That's everybody's choice here. And as a brown Latina, it affects me more than anybody here, more to me, because eyes can come in here and take me, not because I'm illegal, because I was born here, but just because I'm brown. So think about that.
Appreciate that. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments, final things? You can jump back in. I've got a couple of comments to make before we decide on this, but are you sure? Okay. So I really appreciate everybody coming tonight. I appreciate both sides. I really do. And that's, you know, I appreciate what Darla just said, and I understand your emotion in this, Darla. I appreciate what she just said. If you heard what she just said, that she's been coming here for a couple of years. She comes every council meeting for the most part. And she said she's never seen us talk about national politics. Thank you, because we don't, right? I think we've made very clear, the only reason we're talking about this tonight is because it will, if it passes, it will directly affect our ability to advocate for you. And we're not getting into healthcare and all that kind of stuff. We have no control over that. What we have control over is advocating for funding for roads, and for infrastructure, and for water, and things like that. That's what we're concerned about. I care about all the other things, but you don't see us up here ranting about, you know, national politics. Me personally, I do not post political things on my social media, because I care very deeply for every person in this town, and I have worked hard to represent everyone. You may not always agree with me, and I may not always agree with you on things, but I work really hard to represent everyone. I meet with anybody who asks me. I care about all of your needs. I work to find solutions that helps everyone. I don't ask what your political affiliation is, because I don't care. So, and I'm very proud of this council that we are not partisan. This, though, is very concerning. And I wanted, I wrote several notes here as you guys were speaking, because I just want to bring clarity. And again, you may not agree with me, and that's okay. First of all, when this thing was first voted in 2008 and 2010, it was a citizens' initiative, right? The citizens put it on the ballot. The citizens voted. They brought it forward because they wanted a nonpartisan commission, not the governor. That's what's happening right now. Okay? It is being crammed down our throat. We, I was at a meeting last night with our county clerk recorder, who's in charge of our elections, the second in command. Ryan couldn't be there, but- Ryan couldn't be there, but his second was there, and he gave a very detailed description of what they've been dealing with. Normally, an election, they ramp up like, you know, a year or 18 months ahead of time. They have time to prepare. They have time to get ballots, get ballot language, to make sure everybody has what they need, to educate people on the process. They're having to do this in a few short weeks. And yes, it's costing the state a lot of money. It's costing Placer County a lot of money too, that we don't really have. One of the things that is really egregious to me is the deceptive language, right? If you remember, a few years ago, we voted on the gas tax. We had an opportunity to get rid of the gas tax that the state keeps pushing on us and ramping up. What did they do? They purposely worded the language to confuse people, and people thought they were voting to get rid of the gas tax, and what ended up happening, we kept it because of the purposely-written deceptive language. That's exactly what's on here. Now, if it really is transparent, I would love for transparency, then write it the way it's supposed to be. Why create a false title when they're actually doing the opposite? And the issue of transparency, again, they, the state legislature, I've watched several press conferences and their comments. Nobody will answer the question, "Who drew the maps?" And then they keep saying, "It's the most transparent process." Okay, well, who drew the maps? "It's the most transparent process." Well, then who drew the maps? They won't tell us. If it was really transparent, tell us who drew the freaking maps so we can talk about it. Let's talk about it, but we're not allowed to talk about it because they won't tell us. I do want to make a comment about the League of Women Voters. You know, I'm glad we took that off. Lincoln, we have no desire to, you know, drag anybody into it. That's not, we collaborated with a couple of other cities who are doing a resolution just like this, and that was in, we shared resolutions to kind of get the best language, and that was in there that one of the cities had. And so, originally, they did take a position, and so we were very happy. Hey, no problem. We don't want to impugn anybody or drag them in, so that's not the problem. It wasn't like that we just picked them out of the air and said, "Well, we'll just stick them in here," right? It was already in there. So, I totally get that there are, you know, this is emotionally charged, but I want to just say again, we have done a really great job of representing everybody. We are very nonpartisan, but this directly affects our ability to advocate for your resources.
I'm out.
Okay. Have a good evening. Thanks for being here. I appreciate your comments, James, I really do. Okay, you don't get to argue with me. You don't get to argue. Bye. All right. Anything else? Go ahead.
So, I'm extremely appreciative of everyone that has come to voice your opinion and how you feel about it, because to me, there isn't any better way to have a conversation and feel heard than to be able to express your feelings and your point of view. And it's absolutely our responsibility to consider that as we represent each and every one of you. And as a representative for each and every one of you, I am 100% in line with Holly and that it's, we're looking at it from a stance of the ability to represent you. And if that is taken away, then where are we? But I can't express my appreciation enough for everyone that has come to voice your opinion. That's, I can't say it over and over and over enough to say, thank you for coming out and being here, because each and every person's opinion and point of view is very valid and and.
Yeah. I really wish this wasn't remotely necessary for a whole lot of reasons, because it's distracting over the things that are really important for our city. There's some performative nature to what's going on nationwide that we're getting pulled into, and I wish we would fight back and not succumb to that pull. For me, this is about gerrymandering in any form or fashion, anywhere in the country. And that's the frame that I look at the resolution about is, and it's really hard for me to reconcile supporting gerrymandering in the name of saving democracy. That feels contrarian. I don't live in Texas, I live in California, and I feel like we should represent those values, and we should oppose gerrymandering in all forms or fashion, everywhere, full stop. I also want to echo my sincere appreciation for everyone who emailed myself and others and shared your very strong opinions about what's going on in the country and these other issues, and I deeply respect and appreciate and encourage you to keep doing that. To the resolution itself, I actually have some comments on the actual text of the resolution. I feel a little bit like Sections 1 and 5 are kind of the same thing, and I feel like we may be able to get away with being just very clear that we oppose gerrymandering in all forms, full stop. Section 2 is pretty clear. Section 3 and 4, I totally agree that we should have community interest represented, and I think we should have transparency. I sort of feel like those specific sections are maybe a little more applicable if the Assembly had not already passed and the bill had been signed, and we have a proposition in a current form where these things aren't even possible at this point. We have what we have, and so for me, you know, the extent to which my colleagues agree with consolidating down to just being very anti-gerrymandering in all forms and fashion, I would be very appreciative of, because I feel like we have the strongest argument there, and I think it's something that, you know, we can hold up across the community as very few people would have a hard time supporting gerrymandering and democracy in the same sense.
Okay, so are there specific changes or something you want to delete or consolidate?
Well, you know, I think that, you know, Section 1 and Section 5, you know, partisan redistricting and gerrymandering are synonyms to me. So, for me, I would probably just have Section 5 be Section 1 and say the City Council condemns gerrymandering in all forms. I don't think we need the Democrat-Republican thing. We just, it's full stop. There's no criteria, there's no conditions. It's, we don't, we condemn gerrymandering, full stop. That would be my preference, is to just be very clean and direct about it and no caveats are necessary. Section 2 is clean. I'm not sure about the purpose of Section 3 and 4 because where we are in the process, we've passed. I mean, we agree with those things. We should want transparency. There is no way to effectuate that at the moment. The proposition has been written and adopted, and we can't change it. Voters will vote up and down based on what transparency there was or was not and what to the person's comment about the maps are clean. They'll look at them and decide whether or not those maps protect community interests or not. We can support those things, but at this point, you know, that train's left the station.
So, if I can just get some clarification as I'm trying to take notes furiously here. So, we're basically looking to delete Section 1 and move Section 5 to replace it as Section 1.
If my colleagues agree, yeah.
And, I'm just, to be clear, and we're deleting the "whether conducted by Democrats or Republicans" words in Section 5 that will now be Section 1.
Oh. Oh. I am too.
You should have had a new one that was on your, on your dais. The one that is online is not revised.
Okay, thank you.
And then you're suggesting delete Section 4 because the process has already happened?
Yeah, 3 and 4.
3 and 4? Okay. So, that would just leave Section 1 and Section 2, and then Distribution becomes 3, 4, and So, do you want me to read it so that you're all on the same page as to what the proposed is? So, it would now read, "Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lincoln as follows. Section 1, Opposition to Gerrymandering. The City Council condemns gerrymandering in all its forms and calls for fair districts that serve voters rather than partisan political interests. The City Council of the City of Lincoln urges that district boundaries be drawn transparently and fairly so that the voices of Lincoln voters are neither diluted nor divided." Section 2 would remain as is. Section 6 would be renumbered as Section 3. Section 7 would be renumbered as Section 4, and Section 8 would be renumbered as Section 5.
John?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have consensus of the council on that, or you want to make?
I don't have any, I personally don't have a problem with Sections 1 or 3. The rest of my colleagues want to go along with that as noted by the City Attorney. I'm going for it. I personally have no problem in doing it. It's stating a fact.
Yeah, I mean, I could go either way, honestly. I think that 5 is the strongest statement, so that's the most important to keep. I like having the extra language because I think it's more specific about the why, but I don't think that it's imperative to keep, to educate the public in the dilution of our ability to advocate.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with anybody either, but I want Councilor Reedy to feel comfortable.
Me too, yep.
Good. Done with it.
Okay.
All right, so then with the changes suggested, if we're ready, I'll take a motion.
Oh, did you want to make, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll make one more comment. I want to say that I really appreciate everybody's differing opinions. I appreciate that, similar to my fellow Commissioner or Councilmember, Reedy, that I appreciated everybody reaching out and emailing and the differing opinions. I respect everybody's differing opinions, and truly, our intention is not to get into the partisan politics, and I can find commonalities and common ground and sympathize and empathize with everybody's feelings, and this is a very passionate subject. I still feel strongly that it is our job to educate and advocate for our voice and our ability to do our job and what we've been elected to do. So, while I don't find any reason or have any desire to make this a regular situation or occurrence where we're weighing in on politics, as Mayor Andriata stated, I agree, and I try to never discuss politics on social media or publicly. I want everybody to feel that they have the ability to say how they feel, and I want everyone to feel that I'm trying to represent everybody as much as I can to our ability. I feel that this is not stepping outside of our scope, but I do appreciate everybody's opinions, and I don't, I hope nobody feels disrespected in any way, or that we don't respect everybody's feelings that spoke tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right, thank you, council and staff, for that. Before we move on to City Manager Report, okay, so I got a late card for public comment not on the agenda, and I don't, I could skip over, but I would rather not. Is Michelle, is it Kubo? Are you here? Would you, you already did, okay, thank you. I just, thank you, Michelle. Okay, it was just, yeah, different card. Okay. Mr. Scully, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I have quite a few updates. I'm going to move fairly quickly through these, and if you want more, just ask. Since my friends, the Melvilles, are in the back here, and I haven't talked to you in a minute, I thought I'd just use this opportunity selfishly to give a quick update on the Lincoln Crossings Nature Preserve replanting project. I think that's what we're calling it. Anyway, Mark and his wife and a group of folks that live over there have been working with us for quite a while now on a variety of different issues, and one of the things that they've been advocating for, that we budgeted for in this last budget, and it was approved by City Council, was a replanting project in the nature preserve, significant replanting project. And so, I just wanted to let everybody know that our, we hired a biologist or arborist, or maybe both, to design the project in such a way that we can ensure the greatest chance for success, because we've done these kinds of things before, and it's been pretty dicey. And so, we have engaged experts to make sure that where we're planting, how we're planting, and what irrigation is being provided is going to be sufficient to give these saplings the best chance of life, of, to be a, you know, large, mature oak tree, we hope, one day. So, very excited about that, and bid documents are, I think, nearly complete. Those will go out, and then it's planned for the fall, so as soon as it's not super-duper hot, you'll start to see some of that work out there. Secondly, another really big deal is, Councilor Pearl and I just got a newsletter update from the remediation advisory board on the Titan contamination on the east side of town, and pretty exciting development. In August, kind of unbeknownst to us, the Corps began actually testing treatment methods. So, instead of doing what has been done pretty much for the last 15 years, which is just testing where the contamination is and where it's moving and where they think it's going to move and how deep it is, et cetera, they actually got out there and tested a real remediation technique. So, they essentially inject, my understanding is, a carbon into the soil, and the carbon binds to the trichlorethylene, thereby sort of making it immobile and allowing it to sort of bubble up to the surface and then, you know, leave through the airways, which is the way to remediate it. So, we'll get some report, I suspect, at some point. There's a RAB meeting coming up about whether it worked and whether they think that's the appropriate and most cost-effective way to deal with this. So, the only reason I mention that is that this is after two and a half or three, I don't know how long I've been working on this with the council, at least three years, of advocacy in DC, advocacy here, advocacy at our local Army Corps office, and so I was super excited, because although they're really great people that work at the Corps, they also have hundreds of projects going on, all of which are important to whatever community they're in. And so, really, you really have to be at the table to be fed, so we're just proud that we're getting there. And thanks a lot to the RAB Board for kind of taking the torch. Secondly, Mr. Nader mentioned it earlier, but just so council's aware, Matt and Ben are nearly complete, along with the consultants, on our Water Master Plan. We had planned, based on the repeated request from Mr. Nader, to do kind of a quick overview of our water system. As we discussed it more, we'd be really briefing everybody on what's old, and I don't know that that's really very useful. The whole point of this update was to address some of the things he mentioned, but primarily sort of supercharge our capital plans for water as we continue to grow. And so, I think, Matt, what were we saying? We thought it was going to be ready in, like, maybe for the first meeting in October? Is that what we were thinking?
Yeah, Ariselli, our engineering manager, is taking the lead on this project. We're currently reviewing the draft chapters 8 and 10, but we plan on returning to council with the report, and Ariselli did request that she provide the presentation, but for October 28th. But I'll be available for questions, but she's taken the lead and wants to present.
Fantastic. Also, since we're kind of in master planning mode, at our next meeting, we will be doing the fire, I'm just going to call it the Fire Master Plan, for lack of a better term. We were required by Lafco and Village 5 Annex, or maybe it was Sudby, one of the two projects, to do sort of an analysis of our fire response system, our stations, what an appropriate response time is, how far they are from urban centers, staffing levels. It covers the whole gamut. And so, Chief Mahia is going to be giving that presentation, probably alongside the consultants that we hired to do this. that we hired to do this, and it was kind of timely, just given all the fire issues we seem to have had recently. The second piece to this puzzle will be the police study, which is similar, little different. That will be coming to you probably a meeting or two later, because it would be awfully heavy. You're going to have two master plan discussions in a row, and we want to make sure that you're evaluating those documents separately, because they, while they're combined, you know, symbiotic services, I would say they're really very different in how they do their work. Another quick plug, just because I said I'm going to do it, 25th, Senior Health Fair, 10 o'clock. Please come, have fun, even if you're not a senior, please come. Yeah, everybody's going to be a senior. Well, we're not. Yeah, right. On, a couple more announcements. On Saturday, we are doing an airport users' meeting at the EA hangar at 9:00 AM. We're going to give them briefings on the hangar build that's moving along, debriefs on some of our events. We're going to talk a little bit about other plans for the South Hangar sale, or whatever we decide to do with that, and a few other matters, professional management and a couple others that the Airport Committee's been working really hard on. That same day, on Saturday, at 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, we're doing the Kids and Trucks event, which is kind of this neat idea where we're going to bring out all of our heavy equipment, all of our large trucks, some of which are the ones that Matt was talking about earlier, garbage trucks, et cetera, fire trucks, and free event for the kids and people who want to come in, check them out. My kiddos love it to jump up onto the fire truck, get pictures, and there will be staff out there explaining how they do their work, and so if you're just curious, please come down. Free entertainment. Oh, it's at McBean Park. Apologies. Yeah. And two more things. Just wanted to point out, because it's so close to us, every single morning when I come to work, I have watched the building kitty-corner to us slowly get close to completed. I toured it a couple weeks ago. It's a fabulous, I mean, it's really an amazing project, and it's built by Clifton and Taylor and his wife, and was their commitment to reinvest in Lincoln after doing a lot of kind of more mass-produced projects. They've picked these kind of, I would call boutique projects that they're doing in the downtown, and it's a really cool building, and they're all, as far as I know, they're all leased on top, and they're getting there on the bottom already, which is the commercial side. And the other cool thing about it is that I noticed today that it has been named Ceramica, which I think is just such a cool name. So we're going to work with them on trying to set up some kind of ribbon cutting so we can kind of commemorate the first mixed-use building of that kind built in the downtown and probably since City Hall was built over 25 or 30 years ago. So kind of a big deal for us.
The name Ceramica ties in with gladding.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And actually, interestingly, one little tidbit about that, when we were going through design with them, they had a little bit more of a modern design when it originally came in on its initial submittal, and we said, hey, you know, we know that you want to do something that's a little bit different, but can you figure out a way to incorporate the cultural aspects of Lincoln? Gladding, tile, ceramics, et cetera. So they did. They actually added brick features to the front of the building. If you go and look really closely, you'll see that there's decorative ceramics that kind of move around all the entrances and exits. It's a really neat project, and we're actually thinking about ways that we could, we've been talking internally about nominating it for some urban planning awards, because it's unique in that sense. And then, last one. No, I covered it. That's it. That's all I got for you, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Council initiated business. I have one that Ms. Molinkoff and I have been talking about. I'm just going to mention it here because, I want to put it out here, because we've talked about it, well, I've been talking about it for years. I told Sean about it when he first got hired. Christine and I had a conversation about it and kind of expanding it, and so this is something that I want Lincoln to do soon. I think that it's important for us to have a yearly event where we honor our police and fire and our first responders, our Public Works and our volunteers. So what we want to do is have some kind of, you know, nice dinner or ceremony where each department will nominate somebody for, you know, Service Person of the Year, or, you know, police officer or firefighter, somebody from Public Works, other departments if we want to, not that any of them are less than those, and then someone who has been a tremendous volunteer. And Christine and I have thoughts about what that should look like, and I won't say it now, because we want to, you know, put it out there. But, so, I would really like to begin the conversation and get that planned and start it. Maybe we can swing it by the end of the year, maybe not, but have it to be something that Lincoln does every year, because I think it's important, so.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
What would it be called? Have you thought of any names?
We sort of have a loose framework, but basically the City of Lincoln Service Awards, so it would be for first responders, public servants, whether it's Public Works, or somebody from City Hall, and then also a volunteer from the community. So it is on my list of things to do, and it's getting there. Should be due soon.
Well, it's one of those things where, you know, we're thinking the same thing. I've been wanting to do this for a very long time, and then Christina, we're having conversations, she goes, hey, what do you think about this? And I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's what I've been wanting to do. So we're going to, we're going to start working on it, and everybody can participate, but yeah.
Great idea.
Yes. And then, Sean, what is the date again for the State of the City, October, what is it? It's on my calendar, but I keep forgetting. I want to put on notice for everybody that we're doing the State of the City address in October. Sean's going to give us the date.
Yep.
It's at the Civic Auditorium in the morning, and so if the council members could make sure their calendars are...
October 30th at 10:00 AM at the Civic Auditorium.
Is it 10 or 9? Not 10:00 AM?
I have it at 10.
Okay. Because I think what we're going to do is, the hour before that, we're going to have food out front, and then I'm trying to get the two high schools bands and their cheerleaders and dance team to come perform out in the street, and then everyone can come inside, and we'll do the presentation of our year of the city. So I would like all the community to come as well, and we're going to be inviting our colleagues around the county, and so it should be a really nice morning.
So it would start at 9 o'clock for the...
So like the breakfast thing?
Band and everything?
The prelim stuff is at 9, and then the program will start at 10 at the Civic Auditorium.
Perfect.
Yeah. And that's all I got for that. Anybody else have business?
Nope.
Okay. Committee reports?
I've got some stuff. Sean already stole my thunder on the airport, which is going to come up on Saturday. I also have Pioneer Electric that's coming up next week. I was part of a tour of Gladdy McBean, put on by Placso County Air Pollution Control District, going through their entire facility. It's really super, and they're coming up on their 150th anniversary, so that's going to be a big deal for them. That's going to be fun. And then September 23rd, I've got Placso County Water Authority, and that's it.
I don't have anything to report, other than tomorrow, we have EDC, and then I also have Lafco and Auburn. Later in the day, we are, we are in the process of figuring out the process together, because we have to make a board decision of hiring a new EO. Our former EO has taken on a state position, and it's, we're celebrating, but now we have a void to fill. So we're going to either figure out how we're going to, and if we're going to hire an interim or a permanent, or look for both. That's all happening tomorrow, and Lafco is going to be temporarily on hold for the next month. Hopefully, and that's it.
Okay. Does anyone have anything?
Oh, sorry. Nothing noteworthy from my committee.
Right. Nothing from PCTPA?
Normal business, yeah.
Okay. Information items? I guess the State of the City would have been the information, but I jumped again.
Yeah, I have some information items. Tomorrow night, the bingo is for the Lincoln Police...
Activities League.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
L-PAL.
Thanks. So make sure, and I'm sure that was already mentioned, but I wanted to make sure...
Oh, that's great.
Put a plug to. As far as, one of the things that I really am passionate about is supporting all of our nonprofits in this. I have a whole list of different things, but I think I'll see about trying to get them on a calendar or...
Several of us went Sunday night to the Purple and Gold Gala for the Purple Pageant Ladies. They do a lot of community service. They volunteer at every event in Lincoln, and Lisa Taylor, she goes by Lisa D., but Lisa Taylor mentors young girls and helps them with their resumes and job training and how to start their own businesses, and so several of us went, and it was a very nice event, and so we want to support her as she supports Lincoln. They're here for, they volunteer for a lot of things, so that was, that was a good thing to go to. Appreciated that. Other information, guys? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here, and thank you, staff. We are adjourned.
Thank you.